...on phone order services throughout the many neighborhoods that we serve.
Where will this pilot program actually take place and how long will it run by the way as a pilot program before you can determine its success?
Yes, we're beginning a six-month pilot project and mainly will be focused in downtown and Hollywood. We've seen a great revitalization of downtown and Hollywood where business, residential, entertainment venues are all coming together and that has an urban village feel, an urban environment where flagging taxi cabs we feel will be very successful.
Assuming that it is successful and I suspect you're probably absolutely right about that, how might the expansion of the program take place? What other communities might be next, for example?
Many of the communities that would have attractions generating large pedestrian activities, you know Venice Beach, Westwood Village, the Beverly Center, La Cienega, Ventura, those are all some of the areas that come to mind, but this would be able to really go throughout the city, the entire city.
You've certainly named what many of us think of as transportation corridors, especially dense corridors within the city.
Yes, and that's part of the whole program, Jack, is to provide an alternative method to people driving their vehicles into these locations. So it's part of the whole mass transit concept of us being able to use mass transit, metro rail, light rail, subway.
This program is not exclusively through the Department of Transportation, though. What other agencies and departments are involved in the implementation of this hail a cab program?
Our office, the Department of Transportation, the council offices have worked very closely with the Los Angeles Police Department who's on board with this program. We've been working with Chief Bratton's staff on this program and they would be assisting us with this program. In addition, we've been working with the Central City Association, the business improvement districts in downtown and Hollywood, and they also are going to be assisting us in providing the word out to the public and getting the necessary people out onto the streets.
As we understand it, the bus zones were a key issue as to where the taxi shooter should not be able to stop and pick up passengers. There's been a lot of negotiation, I understand, about that. What are the guidelines for bus zones? In fact, if I need a cab in Hollywood, can I hail one from just anywhere?
Yes, and that was the topic that we discussed in council. In fact, as a result of the council action, all of the bus stops will now be not be included as part of this pilot program, meaning taxi cabs will not be able to load and unload in bus stop zones. And that's mainly due to the safety reasons, as I've indicated. As far as in Hollywood, we've also, in addition to hailing a cab, we've provided additional stands, taxi stands, in Hollywood. So you should be able to get a taxi anywhere in Hollywood, Jack.
What happens if, say, I'm in Venice and maybe I want to go to Hollywood or downtown or whatever? Can I hail a cab just on the street and what would happen to a driver if one did stop and pick me up?
Yeah, and that's the unfortunate perception out there that people thinking that it was illegal to hail a cab. It's perfectly legal to hail cabs anywhere in Los Angeles. What this pilot program is initiating is a more focused enhancements of the relaxation of the enforcement rules so that taxis can more easily pull over to the curb, load and unload passengers. The concept is very simple, Jack. It's really is meant that taxis should be able to do this in a safe manner where they won't create an unsafe situation for the public or for the traffic.
Parking enforcement officers obviously are going to be well-versed on where taxis may and may not stop. What about the LAPD? How's information about the hail a taxi program being distributed?
We've been working very closely with LAPD, so all of the protocols and information that we're providing to our traffic officers will be shared with the police department and both personnel from DOT and LAPD will have access to those protocols.
We've been talking about legitimate taxis, of course, so what about the bandit cabs which have been such a problem in Los Angeles?
Yes, and that's a great topic that the city and the department have continuously been working on reducing the number of bandits throughout Los Angeles. In fact, there's been a bandit enforcement program that was established in late fall of 2006 by adding 20 cents to each taxi cab fare, as well as assessing each driver $1 per day. Those funds create about $800,000 annually, which then LAPD's officers as well as DOT's six traffic investigators who work full-time on the fight against the bandit taxis will go out there and try to arrest those violators. And Jack, we've had a good success since the program's begun. We've had a 400% increase in the number of arrests since the program's begun. It's roughly about 1,200 arrests per year. And with January 2009, with some recent legislation that was passed in Sacramento, we will be able to impound in the vehicles for 30 days, which I believe is a strong deterrent for the bandits not to be doing business in Los Angeles.
Let's suppose I take a cab ride from, say, Santa Clarita or Santa Monica to downtown Los Angeles. That cab driver is going to be there in the area where hail a taxi is the law of the land for homegrown cab drivers. Can they pick up somebody who just hails them on the street?
No, and that's, I think, where we come in with the Bandit Taxi Program, as well as an education program that we are going to be doing a taxi fact book. We asked the public and we were going to be educating them to really look for the City of Los Angeles seal on our taxis, on the permitted taxis, and look for the words "City of Los Angeles" in the permits, driver permits inside the vehicles. So those other cities that are dropping off in our city are not allowed to pick up passengers.
So those cab drivers would have to go back to their home city empty?
That is true, yes.
Wow. It's been a very busy week for the Department of Transportation in general. Bring our viewers up to date, for example, on the parking meter rate increases.
Yes, it has been a very busy week and the city council on Tuesday passed an ordinance where approximately 40,000 meters citywide will have a rate increase. Majority of the meters, about 87% or 34,000, will be at a dollar minimum and the other meters will be, rates will be doubled, roughly going from, anywhere from $2 to $4.
We've also heard talk in council over the past several weeks about the possibility of extending the hours where you have to feed the meter, as it were. What's the situation there?
Yes, as part of a very comprehensive parking program, Jack, we're also extending the meters, the hours of the meter operation citywide till about 8:00 PM. That's normally Monday through Saturday. In some areas where you have the businesses, adjacent businesses going later into the evenings and night times, those entertainment shopping districts, we're extending those hours till midnight on Friday and Saturday and on Sundays it will be 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's real important to note that Los Angeles has not had a rate increase for about 20 years and in that 20 years, the price of the Consumer Price Index, the inflation has gone up over 90%. So that's one of the main reasons we're trying to keep the demand has not kept up with pace with inflation, as well as the fact that a lot of people drive and cruise around trying to find that low-priced, underpriced, on-street parking, which creates a huge amount of unnecessary traffic congestion and air pollution.
And to be clear, I assume that some of the transportation corridors that you mentioned earlier, Wilshire, Ventura Boulevard, for example, they still will have no parking at all curbside during commute hours, I assume?
Yes, this program will not affect any of the Mayor's Tiger Team initiatives and the peak hour zone, so all of those programs will still be in place. These are the areas where normally you had metered hours from 8:00 to 6:00 will now be 8:00 to 8:00.
Got it, okay, glad you cleared that up. What about the increase in boot fees that we heard about?
Yes, also as part of the council's action on Tuesday, the boot release fees, which is when a vehicle has a boot and in order to release that, the fee has gone up from $125 to $150. Now, a boot is placed on a vehicle where the owner of that vehicle has had, has five unpaid citations or more, and it's really a deterrent for those individuals to be paying for those citations. If the fee is not paid within 24 hours, then the vehicle is impounded, towed and impounded, and all fees have to be paid, including the parking citation, before the vehicle is released.
Years ago, we used to call that the Denver Boot. Did it actually begin in Denver? Is that when we got the idea?
Yes.
Okay, I always assumed that, never had a chance to ask before. Finally, you mentioned the Taxi Fact Book a few minutes ago. What might be in that book when it comes out and if our viewers have questions about the hail a taxi program or any other thing that we've been talking about, what should they do?
Great question. We're working on that fact book and that fact book will contain information on the city's taxi program. Will have a lot of key information, key contact numbers, how to spot a bandit taxi and, you know, a lot of safety measures that will be put into the fact book and we're working to get that out in the next 30 to 60 days. As far as information, the department's website has a lot of information, which is There's a lot of information on there regarding the taxi industry, our taxi commission, the rules, and that's a forum where the public can give us feedback, they can give us comments, they can put in their complaints, and we'll definitely respond back to them. In addition to the 311, we also have a taxi hotline number, which if I may, give that to you, and that would be 800-501-0999. So those are some other measures for us, for people to be able to get some more additional information on the city's taxi program, as well as the hail a cab program.
That all sounds terrific. Amir Sadadi, Department of Transportation, thanks for joining us in Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be here.
And again, your Los Angeles City Council unanimously approved the hail a taxi pilot program to help make Los Angeles more cab-friendly. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Sundays at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 18th, 2008. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Hall Council Chambers. Today is Friday, July 25. The council meets three times a week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m., and all meetings are always open to the public. And for those of you who can't make it to City Hall, the meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 and can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org or by council phone at 213-621-SITY. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Alacon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weesar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Five members present, Madam President.
All right, present, we do not have a quorum, but we can proceed with presentations for those of you already. And I think I hear somebody in the back who's barking to come in in just a minute.
That wasn't me that barked.
All right, it wasn't Mr. Zine barking. He's here in the chamber. All right, so is there anybody who's ready to proceed at this time? If not, I'll let Mr. Zine take the chair and I'll go ahead and do my presentation.
And we're going to give it to Wendy Grill.
So thank you, councilmembers Han, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, and Zine. And Ms. Perry is our first individual who will be councilmember being presentation. I'd like to ask that councilmembers Weesar and Parks and Reyes, Smith, Weiss, and Wesson, please make their way down to the council chambers.
Okay. It's always a pleasure to be able to thank people for their kindness. And it's a pleasure for me to recognize the sponsors who are standing behind me of the 13th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival, which will take place tomorrow, Saturday and Sunday from 12 noon until 7:00 p.m. in front of the historic Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. Now, the list is long, but I think it's worth and it merits our attention. And I just want to really publicly express that we are in the 13th year. It grows bigger and better every year. And a large part of that is due to the generosity of the companies who stand behind me. Washington Mutual, why don't you raise your hands as we, so everybody knows who's here. Washington Mutual is here. Washington Mutual here yet? Okay. Coca-Cola, our neighbor on Central Avenue. AEG, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, NBC Universal, the California Community Foundation, South Coast Air Quality Management District, Brown Michelle Incorporated, Dolphin Rents Incorporated, Casden Properties LLC, the Southern California Gas Company, KJAS 88.1, and Our Weekly. Let's give them a big hand. With their support, we've been able to continue to present the Central Avenue Jazz Festival and to keep it absolutely free for all those who are in attendance. The Central Avenue Jazz Festival is a unique cultural event, and I think each council district has its own unique events. But this one pays tribute to jazz, music, the unique African-American culture, and the historic Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. This two-day event, as I said, is taking place this weekend and will provide food, areas for kids, and performances from some jazz greats such as Ernie Andrews, Barbara Morrison, Nedra Wheeler, Phyllis Battle, and Pancho Sanchez. The festival is action-packed, and it's a family event that is fun for people of all ages. But the city could not continue to provide this outstanding event without our sponsors. So the sponsors here today have supported the festival, some for many years, and contributed greatly to its overall success. So my personal thanks to all of them. And their contributions have made the Central Avenue Jazz Festival achieve the recognition of a world-class event. And I look forward to continuing to work with them for many years to come. I'd like to ask if I think if he's here yet, is Jose Rizzo here? Come on, Jose, come on up. And Noe Kalal. Jose is from KJAS. Noe Kalal is Vice President, Financial Center Manager, Washington Mutual. And Brian Wilson. So Jose, why don't you take it from the top?
Oh, great, great. Well, thank you, Jan, very much. And of course, the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, I've been part of it from day one. It's been 13 years now. And it's such an important, an important thing for Los Angeles. I mean, it's part of our heritage in the United States. And it's something that we have to really treasure and take care of. And Jan has been incredible and instrumental in making sure and assuring that, that the festival is realized every single year. We feature many of the great jazz musicians that live here in Los Angeles. Many sometimes are overlooked, but they're incredible musicians like Gerald Wilson and, and of course, Ernie Andrews. And the Central Avenue Jazz Festival is a place where we really go out there and enjoy these incredible artists. So again, thank you for City Council for keeping this incredible, you know, legacy alive and looking forward to two days of great jazz.
All right, thank you, Jose. Okay, Noe, is it Noe? Okay. All right, and Brian. Brian Wilson, Coca-Cola has their company located on Central Avenue near 14th Street. It's, I think, a streamlined modern building and an architectural landmark on Central Avenue.
Yes, thank you. Coca-Cola, it is a historical landmark, just like the Dunbar. And we are very proud to be sponsors of this event. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to be good corporate citizens. So thank you very much, and we look forward to the event this weekend.
Thank you. And just as a sampling, I think all of you can grab the corner for me, Jan.
Sure.
This is a picture of this year's poster of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. And again, I want to thank Washington Mutual, Coca-Cola, AEG, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, NBC Universal, California Community Foundation, South Coast AQMD, Brown Michelle, Dolphin Rents, Casden Properties, Southern California Gas Company, KJAS, and Our Weekly. And please take this poster home, enjoy it as much as we have. And there will be more given away at the festival over Saturday and Sunday. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. It's a great festival, and I know how hard you work on that festival as well. When, when's the festival, Ms. Perry? This Saturday and Sunday, Jazz Festival, Central Avenue. Thank you. Our next presentation is by Herb Wesson.
Good morning. Good morning. Good to see you. Anyway, thank you, Madam President, members. Let's put Dusty down. Today's my favorite Friday. It's Pet Adoption Friday. Today, I have a young man who's a very, very good dog, looking for a home. I'm sure there's someone out there looking for a companion animal. And Dusty is, I think, a number-one draft pick. Dusty is three years old. He is a terrier mix. This is as big as he's gonna get. So if you're looking for a nice, small dog, look at that face. Look at that face. Now, I'm, I'm proud to say that here, since we've been doing our Pet Adopt a Pet Friday, we have a 100% adoption rate. Most of the, the animals are adopted by people that are here in the chambers or city staff, to be exact. So we have to keep our competition with the county going. They have a 100% adoption rate, and we've got to keep our 100% adoption rate. For those of you that are watching on television and you, you see Dusty and you, you just fall in love with him like I did, please telephone 888-452-7381. Again, that's 888-452-7381. He's got, he's been fixed. He's microchipped. Dusty is ready to go home with you today. So any takers? Look at that face. Oh, come on. Anyway, and if you in television land, call and Dusty has already been adopted, don't be sad. We have six shelters and hundreds of dogs that are looking to be your companion animal. So with that said, Madam President, I thank you very much. And we're going to keep Dusty in the back just for a little while in hopes that someone decides to take him home. Now, but before I do that, do you have anything?
One more face of.
Do you have anything you want to say, Dusty? No? We were just talking in the back, and he said he really wanted to come, go home with council President Wendy Grill. I mean, that's just what he told me.
Thomas would like him, I know.
Richard Alacon is his second choice. He felt the two of them kind of resembled. You should, you should look like your pet.
Well, your record's gonna be, I think, just fine.
This is a handsome pet, and, and, and Richard's a handsome guy. But he likes ladies better. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We enjoy Adoption Friday as well with the dogs. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Labange for our next presentation.
Have you ever spoke from here? Have you ever spoke from here at all? Have you ever spoken from right here?
No, not from this side.
Always from this side. Good morning, members, Madam President, members. This is a very special day, because today is Stan Chambers Day in the City of Los Angeles. What an honor it is here in John Ferraro's chambers that we have Stan Chambers, who was born in 1923, lived through two great events in Los Angeles, the 32 games and the 84 games. Went to work for KTLA in 1947. And then over the years, his first assignment was at the skating rink at the Pan Pacific. Is that correct?
It was it.
That was it. Because when the poor Pan Pacific burnt down several years later, Stan was covering that story. And you told me that personally, that it's ironic that you would be there at that time. But so many stories, over 22,000 stories that he covered. Of those 22,000 stories, over 1,100 were of Kenny Han when he was a supervisor at the Board of Supervisors. So it's such a special day. We have his family here today, and I want to read some of this great words, because there's nobody, there's nobody like Stan Chambers, and there will be nobody again who fills the role that you did. Being an Angelino, born and raised here, Loyola High School, all the work, your beautiful family, 11 children. Let's have all the Chambers children stand up right here and sister and brothers-in-law. And also a great grandchild, a great, you're a grandchild, but Jamie Chambers right here, right here, you're all recognized right there. And please, for Gigi, his wonderful wife, give her a big hand. And for your wonderful mother who's up in heaven, Beverly, give her a big hand right there. But there's something special that I'm going to ask the IT guys to roll right now. A little footage of Stan Chambers and his work. Roll them.
...on what was a vacant lot in San Marino.
The event that really established television as a news medium occurred right here on what is now the athletic field of San Marino High School. On April 9, 1949, this was a vacant lot. And right about here was an abandoned water well that reached 230 feet down into the ground. Three-and-a-half-year-old Kathy Fiskus lived nearby. And on that fateful day, she went playing in the lot. Somehow, she tumbled into the well. So we started in having no idea that we'd be here any length of time. It was, let's see what's going on. The thing that is so incredible, looking back now, we had no idea of the impact that this was, was going to make. I can remember sitting in the front of a pickup truck, kind of cold, maybe 2:00 in the morning, with a microphone in my lap, and thinking, who in the world would be watching this? It really brought the, the city together. Los Angeles was a big city, but on this one weekend, it became a small-town city. Neighbors would visit neighbors that they didn't know very well. They had to sit in front of the set. They'd have dinner there. They'd go to sleep on the floor, really right up to the end, well, till an hour or two before the end. We really thought that she was going to be saved. And all of a sudden, the word was that, that she was dead. And everybody broke into tears. Everybody was quiet. People walked away to, to be by themselves. And it was a very emotional thing. And I think that's the impact that people watching had, that for the first time, they experienced the long form of television, that they were a part of this whole broadcast from the moment they started looking. And having spent that much time and that much emotion and that much energy to find out that she was dead, the whole city really suffered a personal loss.
And is my colleague at the scene, Bill?
Changed the face of television, and Stan was part of that. But over the years, and I remember, and I think Bernard Parks will remember, because I don't know if you had just graduated from St. John Beany, but when the Baldwin Hills Dam broke, and you turned on Channel 5, and the helicopter was there. You were only three years old. Good. I was selling the Herald Examiner on Hyperion Avenue when there was a shootout on Surrey Street, which is in the Los Feliz district. And I didn't think much of it. There was no Rampart Division, and all the cars raced up Griffith Park Boulevard that came from Central Division. All the cars raced from Hollywood Division up Hyperion. But when I saw the telemobile and Stan Chambers go by, I turned my newspaper corner over to Annie Fitzpatrick, and I ran two miles. All that being said, that shootout is where Daryl Gates was a sergeant, where he said in his book that he got this idea for SWAT in Special Weapons Tactics. No one was killed, but three officers were shot in the shootout. And it's a brick house on the west side of the street, and it still has bullet holes in it. All that history that has taken place here, from the tragedy of the Watts riots, from the very, very sad day in June of 1968 at the Ambassador Hotel, when Robert Kennedy died, the Silmar earthquake. How many earthquakes? You did every earthquake. You felt the Long Beach earthquake, the Tehachapi earthquake, the Silmar earthquake, Northridge earthquake, the Woody earthquake. What quake haven't you met? Huh? Stan Chambers has absolutely covered it all. And all the fires, he was the first reporter to get a brush jacket from the fire department, because they respected it. And then on a tragic night, when an incident took place on Foothill Boulevard, where officers got involved with a beating of Rodney King. And the effort was made to bring the tape to the police department, and they, they refused it. The person who was chosen, out of all the people in media in Los Angeles, was Stan Chambers from George Holliday, who was the person who lived in the building that videotaped that incident, which the rest is history, because of the trust that people have in Stan Chambers. I love him, because he's been such a part of our lives, our lives. I love him, because he's a great, was a great constituent, was a great friend of the late, great John Ferraro. I love him, because some of your family knew my brothers and all this great history and the loyal high connections that's there. Your book, 60 Years with Stan Chambers, is so special. And all the history, it just was important. And the only thing that's unfortunate about this day is my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, couldn't be here to stand. He is serving this country right now, Naval Reserve in the Pacific. So he sends his special greetings there. But Stan, this is your day. And of all the years that you've served, and realize, members, nowadays, if we're doing anything, they'll pull a truck up on the sidewalk, and they'll run a cable through the window, and they'll broadcast live, just like this television is now. But in the days before, and in, and Greg, in your time, they used to have film, and by 1:00, and the old trick was, John Ferraro told me, by 1:00, don't say anything that you don't want them to hear on the press until after 1:00, because they'd have to, at 1:00, they'd have to go back to the studios, develop the film, edit the film for TV. So nowadays, it's real time. All that being said, this is history in Los Angeles. This is history today, because it's Stan Chambers Day in the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. And Mr. Labange. Before we ask Mr. Chambers to say a few words, we have a few councilmembers that would also like to add to that. Councilmembers Rosendahl, Han, Zine, and Parks. Mr. Rosendahl.
Stan, you are the man. Stan the man, you know? And obviously, I've known you a long time. First, just like any other viewer, a fan of yours, because as Tommy just said, your integrity, your honesty, your clarity, and frankly, we can identify with good people. It's, you know, the Hal Fishman story that we all went through, and you've still been carrying his torch at events, like we just did the L.A. Press Club event, and you went up to receive it on behalf of your colleague there. You are an anchor. You are a pillar. You are someone with integrity. And when I watch the news at night, I got to tell you, I go to KTLA first. I know the others aren't going to like that, but I do. And now you have your grandson, Jamie. Jamie, why don't you come up a little bit? Come over to your grandfather, would you, so we can put you in the frame? There you go. Okay? And when I see your grandson up there, I know, I know that the future is secure with another great, great, great journalist who's at the feet of his, of his grandfather. I mean, you know, it's so beautiful for us to see that and keep it in the family and keep going. Will the whole family stand up so the camera can grab you all? We'd like to see you all.
Mr. Rosendahl, Jamie's got 54 years ahead of him if he's going to catch Stan.
I was going to say, I was going to say, he's got a lot, lot, lot of growing up to do. But he's already a good journalist. We watch him on the air, and he's following in your footsteps. So on behalf of, at least another guy who did journalism, as I did, as you know, for 16 years with my television show, you've always were somebody that I saw as a mentor and as a true gift to Los Angeles. Happy Stan Chambers Day.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Han.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Tom Labange for thinking of honoring Stan Chambers. We have Chambers in the Chamber this morning. And what a great opportunity for all of us to get to tell you what a great job you've done, how much you've been a part of the history of Los Angeles, and how much you've been a part of many of our own personal lives. And certainly, I don't know if it was that many stories that you interviewed Kenny on, but certainly, my dad, Kenny Han, went way back with you and enjoyed a great relationship with you. And I think it's been touched on by Tom and by Bill Rosendahl, but it really is your integrity. It's the fact that we can trust you. And in this day of media attacks and onslaughts and unscrupulous journalism, it's really important, I think, because whether it's covering the long, long, torturous hours of the Kathy Fisk drama, or whatever you're doing, or earthquakes, it's not just the story that's unfolding, it's how you tell people it's unfolding. It's the questions that you ask when you interview somebody. And I think it's important that people get the news and get the story right the first time and get it told in a truthful way. You've always done that, Stan, and that is what is so important to, I think, all the viewers in Los Angeles. You are clearly the history of Los Angeles. And like Bill said, your grandson, Jamie, is really following in your footsteps. We've all enjoyed watching him, watching how he also is able to deliver the news in a very truthful, forthright manner. It's great to see all your family here today. You really are just an angel in the City of Angels. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Han, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Stan, I've known you for many, many years, from the time I was with the LAPD, the many times you were on the scene. And I'll pay you a compliment. There was a motor sergeant by the name of Buzz Camp, hated reporters, wouldn't deal with reporters. The only reporter in town he'd ever deal with is you, because you were a true professional, always a gentleman, and always told the story straight. And I'll remember his comments. When reporters would come up and ask a question, he would totally ignore them, not disrespect them, just ignore them. But when Stan Chambers was around, he'd always get the respect. He'd get a response. He'd get a comment, because of your professionalism that you've carried out for many, many years. I remember the people that you worked with, Dan Cook, because of press relations, and how that started with the tragedy with the train at Union Station, went off the tracks, almost down to the freeway. I wrote some notes down, Hal Fishman, the relationship you had with him, Larry McCormick, who was there at Channel 5 for many, many years, Bill Welsh, when KMPC was part of KTLA, Captain Max Schumacher in the helicopter giving the traffic reports. All that history for all those years, being a native of the city, as Tom is, have you delivered those stories over and over for the people. I know you've never done a surf report. Jamie has taken it to a new level, because Jamie Chambers gives a surf report. I always see him there with a surf report with his Hawaiian shirt, giving that surf report. But that tradition that you've always held in this city of professional journalism, always delivering the story, the compassion, the true impact, every single time you've been on target with it. And I hope you never retire. I don't know if you plan to retire, but you are such a legend in the city for the viewers for delivering the news. And to see that video clip of the old equipment that they used to have, the trucks and the cameras, and what they've come to now with technology, how you've seen it evolve through the years and been a consistent pioneer there at that wonderful station. I think that was the first station in Los Angeles, KTLA, which was the first television station, broadcasting the roast parade every year for all those many, many years. So to you and your wonderful family, you are definitely a hero, an angel in the City of Los Angeles. And Tom, thank you for bringing this by. Every day should be Stan Chambers Day, because what you spread, love and cheer throughout the year to everyone, you are definitely a hero. And I'll always respect you. But I remember every single time when I was with the department and you came for a story, you'd give it straight. You wouldn't make it. You wouldn't embellish the story. You were accurate, always on target with it. So blessings to you and your wonderful family. Continue doing that strong journalism delivery. And Jamie, keep that surf report going. Thank you very much, Stan.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. And Stan, that brought back memories that seen in Los Angeles, that was maybe one of my first remembrance of television. In fact, the television was bigger than this room, but the screen was only this big. But it does create a history to reflect on all the things that you've covered. And in fact, you may not recall, but my wife worked at Channel 5 years ago, and I used to come and visit there. And often, they thought I was there to see all of the activities, but it was really the Playboy Channel that I used to go to and watch firsthand as they filmed that show on Channel 5. But we used to also go there and watch the fights, the different sports activities. And it just has been a part of the it just has been a part of the community. Just no more than a week ago, my wife and I were watching television and we wondered whether Jamie was related to you. And we were sitting there and we kept looking and said, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a relative. And so we were debating son, grandson, great-grandson, and that, but it's a tradition and some big shoes he's gotta feel. But thank you for what you've done. You've seen technology all the way from the big cameras to now there's not even tape on the set anymore. Everything is digital, high definition, and you've survived all of that. And so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the community for what you represent, because you've been the leader in many of those faces have left stations, many of those anchors have left. And in fact, the whole industry has moved away from being a reporter. You have news readers and you have reporters, and you've always been a reporter. And so really, I thank Tom for bringing you here and making sure that we honor you appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just quickly, it's just an honor to be in the presence of one of the greats. And Tom Labonge, thank you for bringing Stan in here. This is just a real treat for all of us and throughout the city of Los Angeles to celebrate Stan Chambers Day. It's a special treat and thank you for all your contributions to this great city and the region. You are certainly a presence watching, and like many said here, when we watch you, we see truth and integrity and we listen. And that's what is important for all of us, to understand what's going on, to build a better Los Angeles, and you've done that for many, many years. Congratulations and happy Stan Chambers Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. This morning, as I was watching Channel Five, I see you with all your colleagues, and they're going through a series of events, moments to remember. And what struck me is your experience when the van actually blew a tire and it tipped over and they have you in the hospital bed, bandaged over your scar, and you're very calm, you're saying, well, it's just a little scar, and you were very calm about how it actually happened. What struck me is that here's a gentleman, where most people run away from danger, you're running towards it. Then you become part of experience that was life-threatening, and still you with a smile, sincere, very clear and eloquent in your words. And so it is that style that I believe has allowed for folks to understand the true nature of this history of this city, and it's being delivered in a professional way, and for that I thank you. It's great to be here and share Stan Chambers Day.
Thank you. And Mr. Chambers, I'd like to just add my congratulations. I grew up watching you on TV and didn't know till today that Jamie was your grandson. And now that I see, I should have figured that out, but you trained him well. But you have been a staple, an icon here in the city of Los Angeles, and we are so proud to have you here today and that Tom recognized you. But you gave us the news, you educated us throughout the years, and we thank you for that, because it was always, you were always an individual that we trusted, that when we heard you report something, that we knew it was true, and that you gave it a flavor of your feelings and commitment to the city of Los Angeles and your passion. And so with that, you get to have the last word.
And he's gonna have the last word after his station manager has a quick word. John Mozolsky, who is the station manager for KTLA, a great graduate of Fairfax High School, a local boy made good.
Thank you very much. While ownership may come and may go from television and media properties in this day and age, there's one thing that's consistent, and consistency is Stan Chambers. We're so very, very lucky to have Stan working at Channel Five, and I don't know that he works for any other particular station except the station of Los Angeles. He represents what people are thinking, what people want to learn, what people want to believe, and Stan represents the truth and has for so many years, since 1947 for Channel Five. I also wanted to recognize Mrs. Klaus Landsberg, without her husband, we would not have any pictures back in the early days when KTLA signed on, and it's truly remarkable. He was such a wonderful, wonderful broadcaster and brought so much to the city and to television journalism as it grew up through its formative years. I just want to once again congratulate Stan and thank him very, very much for all of his years of service, and you're not going anywhere.
All right, let's hear it from Stan Chambers right now.
Well, it's sure great to be back here. I bet I've spent two or 300 days covering the city council, and you always had a wonderful office in the back so we could go in there, make all our phone calls and write our scripts and check with other reporters to make sure that we were right. And so this is really a home that I enjoyed all of those years. And the thing that's been so great about KTLA, it literally is a part of Los Angeles history. It's recorded the past century, and it's so interesting to go to our tape files and find out what L.A. was like all of those years. So here is a living legacy that the station has, which is the history of Los Angeles. And to be here and be honored today is an amazing experience. I just can't believe it. But to see so many friends, so many experts, so many wonderful people, I really appreciate being here today. Again, Channel Five is great, L.A.'s great, and we've got a great future. Thank you very much.
Members, Madam President, we could take an extra minute and take a group shot, because this is historic. Stan Chambers, maybe he's at number Channel Five, but he's number one in our hearts. Stan Chambers Day, City of Los Angeles, let's get a group shot. Come on right here. We'll take a family picture right back there. Here we go. From the microphone. They're all clapping. Wanna go around here, because there's only like seven of us standing. Yeah, there's only a microphone. And there's seven of us, I think, right now. Wendy, come on in. Yeah, I think it's you.
Good.
Yeah, we got that in. None, that's spread for you.
I'm gonna get a girl on the other side.
Hold the bottom, they don't catch you out. We learned it from Kenny Han. There you go, Ed, you're in. Good job. Looking straight up, straight up there? For the Hollywood Reporter, Daily Planet. We got it. Good job. All right, family, we're gonna go in the back, take a group shot of the family. Oh, Richard, Richard's here, right, Richard's here, okay. Members, as we continue this celebration, Stan wanted a few folks to say a few words real quick.
Evelyn DeWolf is here, and she is the one that got me into television almost 60 years ago. She was married to Klaus Landsberg, who was the genius behind KTLA. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. I thought that working 40 years as a reporter for that newspaper across the street was a pretty long stretch, but come on, Stan, 60 years, that's one for the Guinness Book. I'm here to honor this very dear friend, not only for his longevity as a TV newsman, but also for being the exceptional human being that he is. Loyal, trustworthy, unassuming, conscientious, gentle, thoughtful, and a devoted family man, right? But I'll let you in on a little secret. When Stan first came to KTLA in 1947, long before he was fully recognized for all these fine qualities, he had two strong assets in his favor, a warm, winning smile and good looks. Actually, he was knockout handsome. His boss, my husband, Klaus Landsberg, had him doing odd chores, like sorting film in the back room, where hardly anyone ever saw him. Stan graciously credits me for getting him in front of the cameras. Well, that's only a half-truth. While Klaus recognized his potential early on, he still kept him behind the scenes. All I did was give a little push to make it happen sooner. After all, isn't that something we can all use? A little push to start up the engine for that very long haul. Stan's long and distinguished career clearly proves that. He made it all the way, and I salute you, Stan.
We'd like to talk just briefly about history. This is the man, Joel Tater, that carefully gathered all the facts and film and stories and put them together on these wonderful half-hour specials that we've had over the years. Joel, could you just take a couple of seconds and join us?
In 1993, on the occasion of Stan's 45th anniversary at KTLA, we did a two-hour special on his career to that point. It was called Stan Chambers, L.A.'s Treasure. Then in 1997, on the 50th anniversary of KTLA, the surprise ending of that show was the naming of the main Channel Five office as the Stan Chambers Building. And in recent years, the Stan Chambers Journalism Awards were established to develop new skills for high school seniors. If you drive by the corner of Sunset and Van Ness, you'll see a marker which simply states, Stan Chambers, Monumental Reporter. And he's also written two books about his career. At this moment, we are all seeing history being made, because we all know that never again will one person work for one television station for 60 years and more. Yes, Stan Chambers, the reporter of record for TV news in Southern California, is truly L.A.'s treasure.
And members, if I could just ask, Father Capus, if you would please stand up, just to get a little love there. Catherine Founigan there, from Loyola Marymount, where Stan is a regent. He went to Loyola High, Loyola University then, and then also St. Brendan's. So here it is, Stan Chambers Day, last thing, this loaf of pumpkin bread from the Monastery of the Angels, because as Ms. Han said so eloquently earlier, Stan Chambers, an angel in the city of angels. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and thank you, Mr. Chambers. We're gonna quickly run through the agenda, and Mr. Smith will be our next presentation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and accor, Madam President.
First order of business, please.
Approval in the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Next is commensary resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
We'll go through the agenda first, and then we will go back to presentations and then public comment.
Items one through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held. There's a request to refer item five and six back to HCD Committee.
So those items will be referred back, items five and six. So are there any specials on those items, colleagues? The remaining items? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next are items 12 through 22, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And Madam President, there are cards on 12, 14, 20, and 22.
Those will be called specials. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam, I'm sorry, 17? Okay, 17 will call special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Madam President, there's a request for item number 18 to go forth with.
Yes, that will please go forth with.
Next are items number 23 and 24 on the continuation agenda, and those are items which are noticed for public hearing.
Yes, and we do have cards on those, so those will be called special. Next item?
Next is item number 25, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on this.
Yes, that will be called special? Excuse me, yes. I'm sorry, is it Mr. 25?
25, is that special for Mr. Parks? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next is a special agenda. Alecon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present and accor, Madam President.
Thank you. First item?
Items number 26 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both items.
Yes, those items will be called special, and our next, would we need to move that to the regular agenda?
And that brings council back to items called special?
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Wesson?
Madam President, would this be the appropriate time to inform the public that Dusty has been adopted? He's being, he's being delivered to Bernard and Bobby Parks's home as we speak. Mr. Parks, did you hear that? I just informed everybody that you and Bobby adopted the little terrier named Dusty. So when you, when you get, when you get home, he'll be there waiting for you. No, he has, he has been adopted, though, and not by the Parkses.
Your record stands.
The record stands.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. We're joined today by a couple, a number of real L.A. heroes, and I appreciate the opportunity to recognize them for what they did. On Saturday, May 17th of this year, I was visiting my daughter in Anaheim, and I got those calls we all get from time to time, that we all fear so much. A weekend or nighttime call from a deputy chief of police informing you of a shooting in your district. And that was the case on May 17th, when I got a call from Mike Moore informing you there'd been a shooting in my district, people were down, and more importantly, and really, really hit me hard, was the shooting was at a church, a very well-known church in my district, a church where I know so many parishioners, a church that's very well-known in the community as a community activist church, St. John de la Baptist. I got phone calls from the chief over the next half hour informing what was going on. What happened on that day was a citizen came to the church to a fair that was gonna take place that day, the annual fair in Carnival at St. John de la Baptist. He came with a backpack over his shoulder, a large backpack, went in the middle of the facilities where they're setting up the booths for the fair, pulled out a rifle and began shooting into the booths where citizens were setting up for the fair. At that moment in time, three individuals were hit by wildfire and three citizens were down. Moments later, for unknown reasons, the shooter stopped shooting for a moment, whether it was because his ammunition was jammed, he needed more ammo, or whatever, we're not sure yet, but we know one thing did happen at that moment in time. Charles Stemberg, who lives in Stevenson Ranch, a former Navy pilot, now engineer, aerospace engineer, Art Perez, who lives in Granada Hills, an off-duty Burbank police officer, Steve Kovasic, who lives in Granada Hills, Jeff Semplez, who lives in Arlita and is an employee of our Department of Water and Power, and Jeff's, and then moments later, Mike Williams, an off-duty LAPD officer, came to the scene. In that moment in time, those citizens saw the moment, the opportunity to strike, and instead of running for cover, they jumped out of the crowd and tackled the shooter, brought him to the ground, removed the weapon, subdued him, and a LAPD officer, Mike Williams' girlfriend was on scene, he was just down the street, she called him, he responded immediately and took, handcuffed the suspect and took him into custody. This is one of those cases where most people run away, and that's what we ask our citizens to do, be safe, be careful. Our police officers are trained to run toward fire, but citizens aren't. But these citizens decided in that moment in time that people's lives would be lost if they did not take action, and there is no doubt- And there is no doubt in anyone's mind that this shooter would have taken many lives that day had he had the opportunity to continue firing into the crowd who was there. These citizens have to be recognized for their extraordinary bravery, their extraordinary service to the people of L.A., and for saving lives. In all of our lives, the opportunity to do good is always there. But the opportunity to save a life is a rare opportunity in time that comes to so few people. Yet these citizens took advantage of that moment in time and became those people that we have to honor today. I want to recognize each of them and give them certificates, but also want to recognize the number of people that are here today to say thank you to them, the people of, first of all, the church, St. John the Baptist de La Salle. And we're joined today by a number of them. If they please stand from the church. Also, Father Milbauer is here. Father, thank you for being here. We have representatives of the Burbank Police Department here. Honored their colleague and their employee, their friend, Officer Perez, who was off-duty and did extraordinary work, the representative of the Burbank Police Department, and Captain Pat Lynch. Please rise. Come on, guys. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do. And of course, out in Devinger Division, the people who are responsible for taking over the arrest, investigating the crime. And our LAPD Officer Commander Ward from Valley Bureau is here, Captain Keane, and Detective Fessperman, who is here also. I want to thank each and every one of them for being here to honor their friends, their colleagues. But now we want to say thank you to these extraordinary citizens who stepped above and beyond the call of duty, not just as a police officer, but as citizens as well, who just did what they had to do to save lives. And for the rest of your lives, ladies and gentlemen, you can carry with you the knowledge there are people living today that probably would not be had you not acted in such an extraordinary manner. And so if I could have Charles Sternberg, please come forward. Where's my plaque? Scat? Who's got the plaque? Oh, there we are. I used to do this for 24 years, so I'm used to it. Charles? You? Yeah? There was no one other individual who was not here today who was part of this team of citizens that stepped forward, and unfortunately couldn't be here, but we also thank them. And I was just informed, I asked Mike where he works for, so you know, he works out of Rampart Division. So thank you to all of you, God bless you. Father, you sure you don't want to say a word? I asked him to say a word, and he said no, but --
Mr. Smith, before he does, I know Mr. Zine would like to say a few words before --
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, and to the heroes. I remember listening to the radio reports that afternoon when this tragedy occurred, the individual who committed this violent act. And when I heard that the police were on the scene, acting in that smooth fashion, I had known Mike Williams for many, many years. He got me in trouble in Pasadena one night at a local bar, but we had a good time anyway, Mike. Well, cops know how to party, have a good time, but when the bell rings, they have to jump in to do something to protect people, they do. So to all of you, congratulations. It could have been much more tragic than it was. I understand how that situation occurred, and Councilmember Smith, who's also a reserve officer, this tells what people do in their off-duty time when they're there to protect the people of Los Angeles. And I've been to that church for services, Father, being a member of the Catholic faith. So I know that the fundraiser's there to help the parish, help the school, make things work. And oftentimes, there's security, members of the parish who participate. Sometimes some members of the parish are off-duty police officers, and people wonder why are they there carrying a gun concealed? Well, it's to protect everyone in case of a tragedy such as what we saw happen on this particular sad day. But to all of you, congratulations for the heroic action. And Father, God saved these people and protected them, and let's keep praying for them.
We at de La Salle are very appreciative of what these gentlemen did. That day could have been a lot worse than it was. Their coming forth immediately to subdue the shooter was an act of heroism, and we thank God that things did not, with their help, did not get any worse. Thank you.
And again, to these great heroes of Los Angeles, we're so proud of you, God bless you. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Smith. And I remember too, listening on the radio that morning and thinking the worst and knowing, hearing that these three individuals risked their lives to try to save others. So I add my congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for honoring them. They are true heroes in the city of Los Angeles. Our next presentation is by Mr. Bernard Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like Mr. Herb Wesson to come up and join me as our honoree today is a person that has a couple of businesses in his district. And so let me start off, colleagues, by introducing you to Marilyn Cole. Come on up. Who's better known in our community as Chef Marilyn. She's the owner-operator of two restaurants, One Marilyn's Place and Chef Marilyn's 99-Cent Soul Food Express. She's born in Louisiana. Her Creole roots are the thing that engendered her love and appreciation for cooking. She's done a lot of volunteer work. Her mother insisted on that as her and her sisters grew up to be involved in volunteerism. When she moved to Los Angeles at the age of five, which was three years ago, she grew up in South Los Angeles area of the city. Before entering the restaurant business, she spent over 11 years working as an auditor and a financial advisor or consultant. She left that industry, and her spirit of volunteerism continued, and she started to prepare meals for her friends after work. The word spread throughout the community about her cooking. She began to sell plates of food at her home, and she became so busy that her friends encouraged her to open her own business. In 1989, she opened the first restaurant, Marilyn's Place. Shortly after that, she became a household name as a soul food restaurant in Los Angeles. Her signature meal was from her Creole background, which was gumbo, and people raved over entrees of meatloaf and spaghetti. Within the first two months of operating Marilyn's Place, she got her first catering job from one of our prior honorees, Nancy Wilson, who was here several months ago, because of her walk being inducted into the Hall of Fame on Hollywood Boulevard. She next endeavored, which she opened her second restaurant, Chef Marilyn's Place, which opened in 2000. In September of 2002, she changed the name to the 99-Cent Soul Food Express. The name change gave her a way to give back to the community and also while providing quality and affordable food. Marilyn is one of those people that, in addition to being a businessperson, has never lost sight of her community contacts in which almost any event that's going on in the South Los Angeles area, she's either a part of it or donating her time or donating her food to make it a better event. She has been a person that is called upon by so many nonprofits. In fact, sometimes she wonders if she's a nonprofit, but because of all of that effort and care. And I just wanted to make sure that we honored her. Both of her food establishments are in the 10th District, and so I'd like to ask Herb Wesson to come up and make some comments because he's the beneficiary of all those sales tax that she's bringing in.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. And Chef, it's a pleasure to see you anytime, but I love it when you're in your full regalia. One of the reasons why Chef Marilyn is so successful is because she was smart enough to know that she needed to have her businesses in the district that I'm fortunate enough to represent. And I must say that her food is phenomenal, and it is reasonably priced. And when you drive past Crenshaw at Adams', you'll see a line outside of people waiting to get into Chef Marilyn's restaurant. But like Bernard said earlier, she's more than about just making money and cooking fabulous food. I can't think of any organization that has asked her for assistance when she wasn't there either delivering food for free or at a discounted rate. I know that she does so, so much with my office when we do community events. She does a lot with Councilman Parks' office when he does community events, and we're all cash-strapped. We couldn't do it if we didn't have a great partner like Chef Marilyn, who recognizes that as you get successful in this business, that it's very important that you give something back to the community. So, Mr. Parks, I commend you for bringing Chef Marilyn in. I did want to say a few words because maybe this means I can get a free baked chicken breast and a baked chicken wing with some cabbage and some sweet potatoes. But anyway, this is a great lady. Let's give Chef Marilyn a round of applause.
Well, see, Herb, all you have to ask, and it's going to be delivered, she brought all of that to my office, and you can come upstairs after this and get all of that, but get a napkin so it won't stain your clothes. Let me also introduce two other people that are here. Lois Buckman, the president of the Riggalets, and also Marilyn's a member of that social organization. And then a young lady that's next to her, I just met a few minutes ago, Bobby Parks, is also here to support Marilyn. They're all club members as a part of the Riggalets. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I want to say thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
One more over here.
Thank you.
Come on up here. Come on, Lois. Bobby?
Yeah, come on.
Come on, stand up here with me. You don't get to speak, but you can stand.
You don't get to speak, but you can -- First of all, I want to say it's an honor, and I thank you so much. And to be recognized for something, just cooking, and I enjoy it, it's an honor. And I'm amazed and fascinated by following such greatness, Stan Chambers and all the other people that have rescued and helped other people. So it's wonderful to be able to feed people and enjoy it, and you know, the fact that you make a little money off of it's not a bad idea. But I do have a restaurant that opened on Pico about a month ago, and we should be having a grand opening within the next 30 days. So I would like to extend an invitation to everybody to attend, and thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Chef Marilyn.
Thank you very -- let me just, for council members, Marilyn has brought some samples of her food via my conference room after council come by and partake in it. We're going to come in and take some pictures.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Gruehl, on behalf of Mr. Cardenous, will be making a presentation.
Thank you. Not rich and famous, just famous.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, Madam President, for this. And I am doing this on behalf of my colleague, Tony Cardenous, who wasn't able to be here today. We have a special, I think, acknowledgement today, and I want to, we have General Manager Randy Levin, Mark Wolf, and William Imperial, along with our commissioners, Dean Hansel, Dennis Hernandez, Anna Kubas, Marsha Hirana Nakashini, and Margarita Gar, joining us today at this podium. We're here today to honor the board members of the Information and Technology Commissioners for the service and dedication to the city of Los Angeles. Since its inception, the BITC, as it is called, has provided proactive leadership, innovation, and stood at the forefront of consumer products and consumer rights, excuse me, and policy as it relates to the cable industry, public educational, and government, and other IT initiatives. BITC was responsible for developing the city's first-ever subscriber bill of rights for the cable industry, and crucial in the development in strict consumer standards that resulted in a dramatic reduction in consumer complaints filed with the city. They played a pivotal role in providing the policymaking body with recommendations with regard to the Time Warner-Adelphia Comcast merger, in which the board added several conditions that would protect the city and its consumers. In addition, it's important that we understand the city of Los Angeles has one of the toughest customer service standards in the state of California. The city of Los Angeles, all of us are very thankful for the advisory role this commission has played relative to ensuring that our cable operators were in compliance with federal, state, and local laws. On April 25th, 2008, this board of commissioners did something very unusual in the city of Los Angeles. They actually recommended that the mayor and council take the necessary steps to eliminate the Board of Information Technology Commission. The board's resolution was based on a few items. One was the deregulation of the industry. Most of the board's ability to regulate the rates of basic cable television service had been eliminated through findings by the FCC that effective competition, as federal law defines that term, exists in most of Los Angeles' 14 cable franchise districts. With limited regulatory information or regulatory responsibility on the federal and state level, the role of the board in the review of transfer and renewal of applications of cable television franchises was assumed by the city council. With the adoption by the California Legislature of the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006, most of the role of the city in franchising cable and other video operators, the development of subscriber service standards, and numerous enforcement functions have been transferred to the State Public Utilities Commission. We want to thank BITC for working with the Information Technology Agency to develop final recommendations concerning the review and approval of private franchises, enforcement of the PUC customer service standards, and their leadership and involvement in LA Wi-Fi, digital inclusion, and PEG channel access initiatives. Before we hear from the commission, we'd like to introduce our general manager, Randy Levin. But I want to say personally that these commissioners, and this commission in particular, I was here working for Mayor Bradley during the time that they actually established this commission, the importance, role that they have played over the years, and the fact that they thoughtfully decided the role of this body had changed so dramatically that they wanted to have it eliminated. And so I know there's some of my colleagues, maybe before I ask the general manager to speak, would you like to do that, Ms. Perry, before?
Bill Rosendahl, would you like to speak?
This is, colleagues, a sad day. This is not a great day, and there should be no smiles from anybody over there because it's a sad day. It's a sad day because the state has taken away the city's responsibility to deal with cable issues. I know, I was the cable exec for 22 years. I know all about the cable industry, okay? This is a bad day. This is not a good day. The fact that on April 28th, the commission decided to disband itself, it was not a good thing. It was the obvious thing to do when you don't have the power anymore or the tools anymore to do your job. I'm very worried about PEG access under the new day. Will there ever really be public access again, or has that just been destroyed, thanks to the big conglomerates that manipulate the political process in Sacramento and did what they did? It is not a good day for public access producers throughout the city that had great access to studios to do things. It's not a good day for customer service. But I must say, Dean Levingworth, come up a little bit so they can see you on camera. And the reason I want this to happen, this is a serious moment. Time Warner, okay, now runs the conglomerate all over the Southland. I had an irate customer call me, irate customers still call me, because I care about the customers, which are now my constituents. And this lady talked about the dismal service Time Warner gave her. I gave her your name, your number, and you got right on it, and you solved the problem, and she called me saying, "You're my hero." Well, Dean Levingworth, you're my hero, and I'll tell you why. You don't have to deal with it unless through the state and the PUC and all this other bureaucracy of nothingness. You have stayed personally engaged, and you continue to stay personally engaged. So customer service, thanks to you being here, is being met. And people need to know that Dean Levingworth and Time Warner does customer service rep. But I might say overall, I'm sad, the city no longer has the ability to regulate, no longer to hold accountability, and no longer to say that public access is as robust as it is. I love all the commissioners and the city staff and everybody there, you've done the best you could, but this is not a good day to get rid of a commission that was there for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselman, I'm Randy Levin, the general manager of ITA. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of the commissioners for all of their time, effort, energy, and the care that they have put into, into this commission. They have all been great to work with, and, you know, we're really here today to honor them for their service to the city. So, I just wanted to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you. And I want to introduce the president of the commission, and particularly, I know these individuals, even though they are leaving on the commission, will be a strong voice, Mr. Rosendahl, because you're right. I mean, that's why we talked about why this was necessary to do and in a time of efficiency, which is they had no control over some of these issues. But I do believe that we have a role of citizens of the city, and to make sure that happens. And I know this commission will do the same thing. So, I'd like to acknowledge the president of the commission and someone who has served the city in many roles, Dean Hansel.
Thank you, Councilman Gruel and members of the council. It's been a good run for the commission itself. It's about, the commission was started about 30 years ago when this new-fangled technology of cable television was just starting to get developed, and the cable operators were just mom-and-pop operations in different parts of the, different parts of the city. And I went back through some of the records to look at the various accomplishments that this commission has had over time. They set in place sort of the basic regulatory framework that remained the framework during the entire time that the city regulated cable television. A few years ago, one of the accomplishments they did was that, of course, the city has received 5% of gross cable revenue, and really among the first cities in the country, the commission decided to challenge some members of the cable industry on how they were defining the revenues, and actually, it ended up in a court fight, and the commission won, which has resulted in millions of additional dollars coming into the city based on our interpretation. We adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance, which was mainly aimed at Adelphia, because they were discriminating against domestic partners in the city of Los Angeles. They were offering better benefits to married couples than they were to domestic partners, and there was a threat of a lawsuit, and in the end, they backed down and ended up having to modify some of their procedures. We developed customer service standards, and we kept quarterly statistics, and we developed standards to reduce the number of customer complaints, and on a monthly basis, each member of the industry came in to talk to the ITA staff, and then once a quarter, the commission had people come in and explain on an area-by-area basis if there were spikes, what was, what was happening with it. As Councilmember Gruel had noted on it, we adopted probably the strictest cable customer service standards in the country that have been adopted elsewhere. Among some of the other features of them was it dictated maximum wait times when people were calling for customer service. We developed privacy standards, a variety of other things of that sort, and a number of other things as well. And of course, as Councilmember Rosendahl said, it's a sad day for us, but we did, the five of us realized with it that although we've had a lot of these accomplishments, that our usefulness had come to an end, and because of all these various legislative changes, both in Washington and Sacramento, and we felt that a government entity should not exist for its own sake, the city has few enough resources that it was, and we felt that they would be better spent elsewhere. So, I think on behalf of everybody, we really would like to thank the city and the council for just the honor to be able to serve with you. One of our other great accomplishments, I think, was just playing a role in the process that led to the retention of, we think, is the strongest general manager of an information technology agency in the, in the country, Randy Levin. So, with that, I think I'll turn the microphone over to my fellow commissioners, who may have a couple of comments as well. No? Well, they're normally not very shy. Let me just then thank them also for all of their hard work. Marsha Hirano Nakashini, who was the, who's the vice president, Anna Kubas, Dennis Hernandez, and Margarita Gar, who was not able to join us today.
Thank you. And with that, if we could, I want to present, this is a proclamation that we presented to each of the commissioners, recognizing all of the efforts that you have done. We could first acknowledge the leadership and the effort of the president of the commission, Dean Hansel. We'll take some in the back, too. Marsha Hirano Nakashini, great round of applause for Marsha, thank you so much. Dennis Hernandez, who's been a familiar face around here as well. Dennis, thank you for your leadership. And last but not least, a good friend to all of us, Anna Kubas.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing us to have this presentation, and a special thank to the commissioners who have been doing the right thing and protecting our customers here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, our next item?
Madam President, would you like to go through public comment now?
Yes, that would be fine. Our first speaker is Mr. Herman Armando. Come on up to the lectern, please.
Excuse me. Arguably, the accusation of political corruption is the biggest of our enemies. The term "politics" generally applies to behavior with civil government, but like City Hall of today, we see it, we hear it, and we have a close view of it. I view it as political failure. Will the authority or power to formulate tactics and measures to regulate the standards of behavior to run this city ever take place in our time? Which of you will show referent power, accomplishment, become a hero, receive the reward for obedience, not corruption? Arguably, no excuse is a good excuse, or should we believe everything that one says? City Hall and council member, where is your sovereignty, the ability to control over your sphere of influence from outside this interference? I argue that local government is inherently corrupt and deceitful. Those that should have the greatest skills of watching over the communities, the greatest skills of overwatching our communities. The inevitable breakdown of government for economic reasons is unacceptable. I refuse to see public services be eliminated to the taxpayers. It belongs to the taxpayers. It should be used for the taxpayers. What then, to refuse public service is the only way of raising taxes? How much more will those of us in our communities have to suffer? Will you hire me to work for a minimum wage? I ask you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker will be Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, I'm glad to see Councilmember Jack Weiss is here. He just did step in. There has been concerns that they're having roll call, and then he's going up to his office and doing illegal campaign contributions, something I wanted to bring. Also, my Team Obama shirt. Zuma Dog has been recruited by Team Obama, and here's my shirt, and that's because I am here to deliver the white guy vote to Barack Obama, because Mar Antonio V. Iglesias, he's going to deliver the Latino vote to Barack Obama. That's right, Mar Antonio thinks he represents all Latinos, and he's going to deliver the vote. That's like saying, I'm going to deliver a crowd in front of Times Square on New Year's Eve. Hell, I'll even throw in Ryan Seacrest. Okay, so, a lot of Latinos are offended that the mayor is claiming to represent them, because who do you think provides all the dirt to Zuma Dog about the mayor? The Latinos in his district. So, he does not represent all Latinos, he's just holding them up as props. And now, we have Athila Shaw, who is here today, and she will be speaking, please stay tuned in. And we have eight-year-old girl who was killed by stray bullets on her doorstep. But the city will be waiting this week. Mar Antonio, he's outraged and will do something, but first, he has to go to San Francisco this weekend to deliver a speech. Gang members, please cool your jets, don't do anything, the mayor's not here to do anything. He's going to San Francisco to deliver a speech this weekend, and he's going to be fundraising, and he's going to be delivering the vote for Barack Obama. He just got back done delivering the votes for Hillary Clinton, and he's got a lot of fundraising, okay? So, here's what I'm here to say. It's going to take economic development, truly, job creation. After the war, they sent Dr. Deming to Japan to rebuild the demolished communities. We need to take the same principles and redevelop these communities, provide job growth. I have the plan, it's on my blog, zumatimes.com. More on that coming up.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. A report on the, for those who missed it, on the MTA board meeting that was held on Thursday, where the board decided to put a request in for the sales tax on this month's, this year's California agenda for election in November. They want a 20-year plan, or they want a sales tax to go for 30 years for their long-range plan. Part of the problem is, in 2001, they had a long-range plan that they still haven't completed. Yet they're establishing a long-range plan in 2008, listing projects that they need to have funded with this half-cent sales tax. It would behoove the MTA to complete the 2001 long-range projects before they decide to establish a new list of projects and a 2008 long-range plan. That way, the public would receive something, see that something is being done. Maybe if they established a short-range plan in 2008 to see what they need to do to complete the 2001 long-range plan, then the public might get behind putting some money in their pockets, putting some money into MTA funding. They're going to take money in their pockets anyway. But to establish a long-range plan when they haven't completed one long-range plan, and the previous plan from 1980 took them, which was a 20-year plan, they're claiming credit for 28 years. There's so much deceit in the MTA. And don't forget, the leader of this cause claimed the city was having a budget deficit problem, and they were going to lay off people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Althea Ray Shaw. Althea Ray Shaw.
My name is Althea Ray Shaw. I'm here because my nephew, Jamil Shaw II, was viciously murdered, and we're still hurt about what happened to him. He was loved, and we miss him. I think that the city council, when I watch you guys on TV and you vote, everything is 15, all right, 14, or 13, just because you don't agree with Jamil's lie, it shouldn't mean that you shouldn't come and discuss it and bring it to the floor, and what about a vote, 8, 7, or 9, 6? You shouldn't wait till you always disagree just to bring it out, and if the people in your community want to hear this, you should bring it out, go word by word, line by line, be transparent so we can see what we agree on it and what we don't. I think that, that Jack Weiss, I think with Zion's motion, if you're over public safety, this is going to help people. Let's just bring it out and talk about it. What you don't like, you speak up, and when you guys vote the way you vote, it seems like you are doing it in a back door or secret voting, and we should be transparent. And if it was your nephew or your child, you wouldn't be happy with the way, with what you guys are doing. You would say, you know what, just because we don't agree, the people want to talk about it, let's talk about it. We feel that, that it's not about black or white, it's about life and death, and just because you come from the country, another country, we all know that no one is checking immigration status, we know that, but you do not have the right to kill people, and it shouldn't be Republican or Democrat, you just, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Saul Annenberg. Michael Carrion, you'll be after Saul Annenberg.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank each and every one of the council people here, you're wonderful people, especially Councilman Parks. I commend him and I appeal to him. I was at the funeral for Jamil Shaw, and I remember the pastor saying, we can do better. So, Mike Hernandez, pay attention, and Richard Alacon, pay attention.
Excuse me, the speaker, the speaker should direct his comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members.
I'm directing my comments where it belongs, to the distinguished people of the council. God bless all of you, but you have to know that this is a partnership, we can do better.
Please proceed with the clock.
And I feel that Barack Obama was right, and the walls must come down. Walls must come down dividing African-American, Latino, Jews, and Muslims. We can do better. There's an old saying in Spanish, el mundo se divide en dos ramos, los que aman construyen and los que odian destruyen. The world is divided into two groups, those who love and build, and those who hate and destroy. I'm sorry to say, the gang members here in the city are those who hate and destroy. We have to work to turn their lives around. They're just kids, like Chief Bratton said, they're not gang members. He's seen them break down and cry. I pray, I ask you, please, we need to work with youth. Don't you think it's time to stop the violence, the hate, the prejudice, the injustice in our world? Who's going to do it? We need to do it. It's a partnership. Please pay attention, Councilman Parks, I need your help. Councilman Parks, you know what you have to do. Thank you very much, God bless, each and every one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrion, you're next, our speaker, and after Mr. Carrion will be Candido Moraz.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. Once again, I'm here on the unfairness of the parking. It's a shame when you want to raise prices because of your lack of responsibility. You cannot manage money, so you turn around and reach into the pockets of the taxpayers. The people of Los Angeles have to pay for your fumbles, your bumbles, your inadequacy to run a city. Yes, I speak to all city councilmen. I am speaking to you in general regarding the Transportation Department, which happens to be Mr. Gruel, Labange, Rosendahl, Alacon, and Parks. Parking enforcement brags so much on television how great they're doing, but for the past two and a half weeks, they have not been out to see a car. I've called 311 three times, I've called, let's see, 224-6565 four times, which is the community area. They still haven't been out there, but they're crying about being underpaid. Where are they? They're all parked under a shade tree somewhere, not doing their job. I wonder where you guys get your numbers from? A Crackerjack box? Because all your numbers, all your numbers add up to, we are doing so great. You guys aren't doing crap around here but sitting down collecting a paycheck. You got your little pet projects while the rest of the city is going to the dumps. We got illegal dumping, we got illegal parking, and unless you can make a buck on it, you're not going to do nothing about it but sit and read the paper all day. Thank you.
Mr. Moraz, and then following Mr. Moraz will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Madam President, council members. I have to direct my issue to Mr. Greg Smith. I have to direct my, my, uh, issue to Mr. Greg Smith. Mr. Smith, welcome back. I know that you were out there visiting cities and taking a look at the trash conversion, and one day we're gonna eliminate the landfills in this city, and that's gonna benefit every district, so it's not just the 12th district, but you're doing something wonderful for the entire city. I also wanna thank you for your staff, because while you were gone, you had nothing to worry about, because you hired the best, and in our district, the 12th district, everything ran smoothly, so again, thank you for that. The other thing I wanna mention is the De La Salle event, your friends, the Knights of Columbus were also there.
Excuse, excuse me, he, the speaker, even though he's complimenting him.
These are city issues.
You should direct your comments to the council as a whole.
Well, then I will, but I, how can you give credit?
You could talk to, refer to him in the third person.
Can you hold my time?
Go ahead, we'll make sure you have it.
I'm not being negative, I'm talking about the good, positive things. Today, we had police officers, an individual within the community at De La Salle's, the Knights of Columbus were there, friends of the councilmen, and friends of everybody here, and they quietly were heroes, they were helping the kids and the, the parents get their kids out of the situation, 'cause nobody knew what was going to happen. So there were a lot of heroes, and thank you for honoring those heroes, because a lot of time, these people go, and nobody really recognizes them. And to the young lady that was here who lost her, her nephew, Jamal Shaw, I was here, and I'm sorry to hear that we lost another eight-year-old, but I would ask this council that when someone comes here and they have lost a child, that you stop what you're doing and listen. The last time we, I was here, one of the councilmen went over and had a, a conversation with his favorite, his favorite lobbyist, and crocodile tears don't work here, so I would ask that you would hold back on those things. I only have 13 seconds. The, the other issue was Leland Wong, he was convicted. You had a city worker named Sandra Miranda who came here with a janitorial contract, it was canceled, she talked about missed down, uh, missed discounts, those have been improved. There was so much that was proven by this young lady, and nobody helped her, nobody helped her. Why? Why was, why were people afraid to help her?
Thank you.
Why were they afraid to help her?
Thank you.
I'm not being disrespectful, but why?
Uh, Michael Hunt was our next speaker, after Matt Dowd.
I'm first, 'cause I put the cards in. His one says Mike Hunt, if you actually wanna look properly, 'cause I wrote it. So let's get the order right on the speaker cards, that's the first thing of city business. Welcome back, Greg Smith, I hear a lot of good things, he's becoming my favorite councilman, so yeah, I'll thank him too. Is that the kiss of death, or what? No, it shouldn't be. And Jack Weiss, oh my God, he's riveted to his seat, someone must have got maintenance down here and put some fasteners on here.
Excuse me, can we hold this time so I can make this announcement?
Please hold this time, yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Public criticism of the policies, procedures, programs, or service of the city, or the acts, or emissions of city council are allowed, however, discussion of personalities of city officials or employees is irrelevant to these proceedings, and such comments may be ruled out of order as violating the city council's rules of decorum.
Thank you, we're talking to Mr. Dowd at the moment, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for the clarification for Channel 35. I'm sure they're all dying to know what that meant too, but really, it means you're not allowed to say bad things about councilmen, right? About their, uh, um, fact, I don't even know, I don't even know, all I'm gonna say is, I'm happy with the performance of Greg Smith, and I'm not happy with the performance of Jack Weiss, I think, in a nutshell. But, look, we got problems at Venice Beach still, that's why the Outlaw Show keeps going. I don't know if you like the show on Channel 35, the people come up to me all the time, they love us, they're like, "Oh, I watch Channel 35 now, we love you guys, Zuma Dog, and Matt Dowd, and Michael Hunt." So, they're going about it the right way by harassing us continually at the beach, and you know, it extends, and the people on Channel 35, they'll understand what harassment is, they come and mark your tires, and, uh, you know, scrawl all over your windshield, things like, you know, don't sleep in your car. And yet, the car is full of, like, tables and, you know, boxes and, you know, stuff. So, anyway, it's great to see Janice Hahn here too, and, uh, the council should tell her that Matt Dowd said he's happy that she's able to attend, it's always good to see her pretty face. Thank you so much, Channel 35, and now we got a presentation from Michael Hunt.
Thank you again, and thank you, Matt Dowd. My report on the boardwalk is 90% positive, 10% negative, um, the harassment continues, that's just because they don't understand the constitutional law. What I brought down here is a sign that represents me religiously and politically, um, and where's the city council guy at? Can I display my, my sign?
You cannot.
That represents my action on the boardwalk?
Pursuant to the city council rules, the signs are not allowed, mainly for the viewing purposes of the audience.
Because, while the two minutes I'm, while the two minutes I'm on stand there are not allowed, or they're just not allowed, what's the name?
They're just not allowed.
Uh, can I, can I get a copy of the rules of that? Because this, this sign carries a political and religious statement to what I do down on the boardwalk, which is irrelevant to the city of Los Angeles, and its, um, and its logo, while I was understood by the ACLU that I was able to display while I'm up here, any actions or actions regarding the city of Los Angeles that pertains to my permit holding as a permit and stakeholder of Los Angeles, California, that I was able to display anything that I was, um, actually involved with, with the city of Los Angeles, and that they gave me a permit to do. And that's entitled me to free speech, and my sign is totally pure speech. So, can you please bring me a copy of where it says that I can't display with this, what I'm a permit holder from the city of Los Angeles, and that the ACLU said the same thing, along with this total free speech, and this sign represents me from their permit from Los Angeles? No, I just don't wanna do it, 'cause I, I wanna sue them. I, I, I mean, I mean, if I'm not able to do it, because this is my two minutes up, and I would be referred as not being able to display the thing that represents my political and religious statement in America.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah. They all like to see what it looks like.
Okay, that's right. Thank you, just wanted to see what it was. Okay.
So.
I wanted to see it.
Well, Mr. City Attorney had advised that he could not, so, um, but we, we will provide any information on that. Mr. Attorney, you wanna add anything before we go to the next item?
It's pursuant to the council rules, however, the council member, uh, requested that he display the sign, so he displayed the sign.
Thank you. Our public comment is now closed. Uh, Madam Clerk, there's been a request to ask for item number 23 to go next. I know there, Mr. Ray, there are two public comment cards, Mr. Arnold Sacks, Mr. Arnold Sacks, followed by Zuma Dog. Mr. Sacks.
Oh, this is the Business Improvement District, yes, item 23. It says here, Article, part of the motion item, that Article 13D of the California Constitution has been invoked. So I look back on some of the other, um, hearings, items that have been on the agenda, and refer back to the Hollywood Entertainment District property bid that states Article 13D of the California Constitution. So my question is, um, this is a Lincoln Heights Business and Community Benefit District, how does that differ from a Hollywood District property and bid, a Business Improvement District? Since it falls under the Administrative Code and Article 13D of the California Constitution, it does not name who the, who the, um, nonprofit group will be, you, will be that will run, manage, run, run the Lincoln Heights Business and Community Benefit District, nor does it mention who the nonprofit group that will run the Lincoln Heights Business and Community Benefit District will hire as a for-profit management group for the nonprofit group to run the Lincoln Heights Business and Community Benefit District. We're looking for some openness and some transparency, and I can see that it's as transparent as mud, and I'm quoting somebody from the County Board of Supervisors, but hats off to them. So, further information forthcoming on that? Do we know who the, who the nonprofit group will be? Do we know who the for-profit group will be? Can that be included in the item on the agenda?
We'll have someone from the CLA, from the liaison office, to, uh, to give you that information.
Can we get the information to the public?
Yes. Mr. Zuma Dog? Mr. Zuma Dog?
Yes, I do have a good idea, I was talking about business and economic development, and since this is Lincoln Heights, which needs economic development, here's an idea I have for the city, and we need jobs, and we need them in the communities, but what happens when we say business and improvement, uh, what the city means is things like luxury five-star projects, like Grand Avenue Project, LA Live boutiques, five-star this, luxury that. I would like to see the city focus in these low economic areas, provide jobs for telemarketing centers, let some of this gang intervention money, let some of the nonprofit money go to build some telemarketing call centers in these underserved, economically challenged communities, having tough times with jobs, because a lot of the call service centers, things like AOL, DirecTV, when you call over, it's being outsourced now, and things like market research studies, and camp, you know, calling on the phone, any telemarketing needs, that's something, 'cause manufacturing will not be coming back. We cannot expect the manufacturing and widget production to provide the jobs in these business districts and economic development, and it's also can't be luxury five-star stuff, and the, the communities aren't gonna be able to support it. So I would like to see, when they're not keeping basketball courts open two extra hours, that's not gonna be the problem, I'd like to see an idea of taking telemarketing centers and constructing those and staffing them where a place where people need jobs in the community. Now, you might not wanna be able to work at McDonald's under stringent hours, you know, under rigorous work conditions, but if you have these call centers set up in the community that can be staffed by the people in the community trained, then the moms can come in for part-time jobs, students that need money, and the people that aren't out there gangbang, and everybody says, "Oh, nobody's gonna wanna do that, they're making thousand dollars selling crack." Not everybody, very few people, and for the rest, we need some real economic business development, this is one type of innovative idea, more to come, but do something.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog. That item is now before us, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, there's no vote on this item, however, a public hearing should now be closed, this item will come back on Tuesday.
Okay, this item, uh, will be coming back on Tuesday, uh, before us.
And the public hearing is now closed.
The public hearing is now closed. On item 24 is our next item, we do have public comment cards on this item. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I know you've indicated this is a fair hearing matter, colleagues, and we will, yes, Mr. City Attorney, did you wanna add something?
Yes, this is a fair hearing matter, requiring the council members' heightened attention to either their monitors at their desks, or to the speaker at the podium, and there has been circulated an amending motion, a technical amendment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zuma Dog and Mr. Arnold Sacks? No, Mr. Zuma Dog, you choose not to.
Yes, thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. How considerate, how fortuitous that the city council, a couple of months ago, decided to change the permit density from 600 square feet to allowable 400 square feet. This item doesn't mention the percentage of the, it does mention that there's 305 dwelling units, it doesn't mention how many item, how many of those 305 dwelling units will be of the 400-square-foot unit size, it doesn't mention how many of those units will be a low percentage of those 400-square-foot units sized, and it doesn't mention any amount of quimby fees that have been generated by this development. So, all in all, it's a real bonus for the developer, because he gets to build smaller units, increase the density, and make more money on the project. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your answers.
Thank you very much. Uh, we now have the individuals who are, uh, have indicated they're against the proposal, it would be Doug Haynes, followed by Kevin Norton, followed by Ziggy Cruz. Doug Haynes? Again, if we could have the others, please come up to the podium, Kevin Norton, followed by Ziggy Cruz.
Hi, my name's Doug Haynes, I'm with the La Mirada Avenue Neighborhood Association, and we oppose this project for numerous reasons. First, this project has the most discretionary entitlement requests in the history of the city of Los Angeles. Hollywood Highland had four, this project has 17. If approved, it will forever compromise the planning department's legal authority to enforce compliance with the municipal code, it is unregulated development with merely the veneer of regulation. The developer wrote the environmental analysis, he wrote the updated findings, he even wrote the motion passed by the planning committee as before you today for approval. The only thing the city is writing is a check for over $17 million in direct taxpayer subsidies for this project in a time of fiscal crisis. As example, we're being asked to pay over $5 million to subsidize the developer's required open space with a park placed above the project's subterranean parking structure that will be in perpetual shade during the winter and will be controlled by the homeowners association. We're also paying to build the project's office space at a cost to taxpayers of $6 million, and the taxpayers will pay for the project's so-called workforce housing, subsidizing these tiny market-rate condo units that measure 550 to 650 square feet apiece, are the size of a hotel six-room, at a cost to the taxpayer of $90,000 a unit. The developer isn't subsidizing these units, we are, there's absolutely no affordable housing included in this project. In contrast, the Clorett project that will be developed across from the Pantages Theatre is voluntarily setting aside 114 units as true affordable housing, without any subsidies from the taxpayers, with a surplus of parking in a largely co-compliant project. This proposed project is a complete rejection of the zoning laws and the advisory agency's state-mandated authority to set policy and regulate subdivisions. It's twice the allowed density with almost half the required parking, a 260-foot-tall building where the zoning code allows 45 feet, in other words, it's a case of throwing out the municipal code and allowing the developer to completely rewrite it, following no plan except the end of planning, and it will result in litigation against this city. Thank you very much.
Kevin, if I could have you just wait one minute, 'cause I think you're on the foreside, we might have had your card marked incorrectly. Um, so we're gonna have that against Ziggy Cruz, and then we will go to Mr. Norton.
Good morning, uh, my name is Ziggy Cruz, and I'm here today to represent Bob Blue, who couldn't be here. Um, he asked me, however, to read this to you. The core reason he is opposing this project is the negative impact it will have on the surrounding area, because this project is drastically underparked. The area already has a recognized critical parking shortage. Last year, Mr. Blue personally canvassed the neighborhood and solicited feedback from residents, and they unanimously, unanimously, unagreed that the existing lack of parking in the neighborhood could not take the additional impact of the Sunset Garden project as currently proposed. Today, we are being offered an artificial choice, this project or no project, and yet, no alternative project has been offered or presented. You can have another choice, which was proposed by the previous owner of the project, the GTO Development Team. You can have a project that will still provide good jobs, open space, and contribute to the neighborhood as well as the city of Los Angeles. A project that has 13 stories, not 23 stories, a project that doesn't use 17 million taxpayer subsidies, a project that doesn't put such a burden on the public and on the current city's aging infrastructure. The current Sunset Garden project has the most discretionary entitlements ever granted to a developer in the history of the city of Los Angeles. The, the project has 17 separate discretionary, discretionary requests. As a comparison, the Hollywood Highland project only had four. The granting of variances for this project is equal to a subsidy, because it directly increases the value of the land to the owner and the expense, at the expense of the taxpayer who's facing the burden of all the impacts of the project. Therefore, Mr. Blue respectfully urges you to vote against this agenda item today. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin? Kevin will be followed by Craig Lawson, Michael Woodward, George Abu-Dowd.
Good morning, Councilmember Gruel, and, uh, council members, my name's Kevin Norton, I represent IBEW 11 Electricians Union. I stand before you in strong support of the project and against the appeal. Um, I'm joined by Bob Smith, and, uh, from the Painters District Council, and Myung Su Suk from the LA County Federation of Labor, and Labor stands united behind this project. Uh, in, in sake of brevity, I'm gonna be very brief, um, that I just wanna make note that the project received unanimous support from the CRA Commission, as well as the City Council Plumb Committee. It's an excellent project, and in the economic climate we're currently in, uh, this project needs to move forward. Construction projects all over the city are drying up quicker, you can blink, and we need to make sure that this much-needed project and the money it's gonna generate for the city's construction workers and for the city, uh, tax base moves forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the remainder of the speakers, we'll have 10 minutes, we'll be on this side, so we'll fit within that time period. Craig Lawson?
Madam President, members, my name is Craig Lawson, representing the applicant, in this case Sunset and Gordon Investors. This is a group that is primarily formed by the Gerding Edlin Company, which is from Portland, the same group that built a number of the innovative projects that you've seen downtown in South Park, the 11 Building, the Luma Building, and the Evo Building, all in the 11th and Grand Block, and the third building is just about finished. These are all high-rise, mixed-use projects that have brought outstanding new design and new technology, really, to the city in terms of new projects. This is a key project for Hollywood, at Sunset and Gordon. It's a 23-story building with over 300 residential units, 40,000 square feet of creative office space, and we need more office space in Hollywood, 22,000 square feet of retail and restaurant uses, and over 500 parking spaces for the residential and the commercial uses. The project has wide community and public support. There are letters in the file, as well as additional letters that were submitted today of the major support that we have from all kinds of different groups. Yes, we do have a couple of appellants on this case, but those appellants have been heard, both at Planning Commission and at the Plum Committee, and we urge you to support the Plum Committee recommendations and to approve the Plum Committee report. We also have no objection to the minor technical amendment, which is in motion 24A, that's fine. So we urge you to move forward and approve what was recommended by your Plum Committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. And errant earlier in saying 10 minutes, you all will have the same amount of time, which is about four and a half, so you have about two and a half left. Michael Woodward, followed by George Abou Daud, Matthew B. Bray, Brett Pomeroy, and Tom Cody.
Good morning, councilmembers. Michael Woodward, 1999 Avenue of the Stars. I'm an attorney representing the applicant in this project, and again, I would reiterate what Craig says, to please support the unanimous Plum Committee decision and the virtually unanimous Planning Commission decision on this project. The comments that have been submitted by the appellants really represent their opinion, their personal views, and for the most part, with respect to their comments related to the EIR are untimely, because EIR was completed by the CRA as a lead agency, and they, in fact, commented on the EIR, but they never followed up with a lawsuit after the NOD was filed. The other point I would indicate is that we submitted a letter today addressing comments of their traffic engineer, and indicated that there's been no change in the project, no significant change, that would warrant any kind of reassessment or reevaluation of the environmental analysis. We've also indicated a chart of comparable projects where the variances that are being asked for here have been granted in other projects in the vicinity, even some by the same developer. We submit that you should support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we actually give you additional two minutes, and an against card just came in, so.
In L.A. this week, from munchkin land to City Hall, we'll take you to a special day for an after best known for being a member of the Lollipop Guild.
I'm Anna Marcos, applied by city leaders and the L.A. Unif.
From the site. It was vacant since 1997. Today, I've improved the entire building with new restaurants and retail, and the neighborhood is very happy. Keep in mind that this stretch of Sunset Boulevard has long been neglected, and the neighbors are more than happy to see signs of improvement. The proposed site was recently occupied by the Old Spaghetti Factory, which did limited business prior to its sale. If the site were to be anything else at this point, I think we'd have another nightclub or a strip club or a partially occupied, poorly-built shopping center. To give an idea of how committed I am to strong and positive change in Hollywood, I have now opened two restaurants east of Vine Street with four more on the way, all neighborhood places, not clubs, lounges, or dive bars. Further, I've restored several multifamily properties in the area and work with the neighborhood on a lot of issues. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, the Central Hollywood Coalition, the Sunset and Vine Bid Board, the Security and Streetscape Committees, and I've served on the neighborhood councils in the area. I live three blocks from this site. I'm constantly combating crime issues on this stretch of Sunset. We need good developers with good plans to come in and enhance this neighborhood. It's time for positive change, and when we get a developer like Gerding Edlin coming in with capital at a time like this, we should move forward on the opportunity. The zoning allowances in the city are behind the curve, and L.A. is the country's second-largest metropolis. I'd want to continue proper and carefully planned growth that enhances the economic and social well-being of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Bray? Is it Matthew or Brett? Okay.
Matthew Bray, GBD Architects. I'm waiving my time to let and allow Tom Cody to speak.
Great, I think we have one more minute.
Okay, I'm Tom Cody of the applicant. Thanks very much for your consideration today. I hope it's apparent to you that we've treated this project with a great deal of care, a very high standard of care, both the project and the process. There's been much discussion around the parking, the parking count, the dimension of the stalls. I'm here to tell you that we've developed numerous mixed-use projects much like this one, and I'm here to tell you that they work, as a testament to how they work and how well-received they are in terms of the marketing of them, the operation of them. The onsite property manager of two of our projects in downtown L.A. has submitted a letter today for your consideration and a testament of their functionality. Secondly, the park component, I would add that a three-party agreement between the CRA, the Parks and Rec Department, and ourselves was unanimously approved by the CRA Board two evenings ago, and it's a very innovative approach to providing public open space in a park-starved neighborhood. So thank you very much, and I'm here for questions at your pleasure.
Thank you very much. One more card on opposition, Mr. Edward Hunt. This will be the last public comment card for this item.
I'm Ed Hunt, and I'm on the board of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council, that is the council in which this project is located, also chairman of the Planning Committee for the Melrose Hill Neighborhood Association. And I like many aspects of this project. The one I'd like to focus on is parking. And this was the sole reason, really, that our neighborhood council voted against the project, was that here we have an area of our community that already has a horrendous parking deficit, and this was not at all taken into account in any way. We just think that the parking is way insufficient, and other than that, we would like to see another layer of parking which could easily be done, and the city ought to basically follow its own regulations on parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, before us today is the item from the Plum Report, as well as the amendment that is before us. Madam Clerk, if you could, please.
See, Michael Legrand, you're familiar with this here?
Yes, Mr. LeBanche.
Just explain the parking, because I think that's an important concern everybody has.
Michael Legrand, Department of City Planning. Just to recap, this project is providing 107 parking spaces, and again, it's approximately 300 units, 305 units, and it's in a transit-rich area right next to the Metro Rapid Line. It's also within walking distance of the rail line. So when we see urban areas like this that are designated to become regional centers, one of the things we look at is trying to help make sure that the viability of the project works out in terms of parking, but also to encourage people to use the mass transit we have in place in an area like Hollywood that's pedestrian-oriented, where our community plan is going in that direction, that completely fits within the guidelines that we operate under from the general plan as well as the Hollywood Community Plan, to try and encourage people to utilize the transit that's in place, and also to provide enough parking for guests and for residents, but also utilize the rapid bus as well as the red line.
And when they acquire the, is it apartment complex?
Pardon me?
Apartment complex?
Subterranean parking within the building.
No, it's an apartment complex.
An apartment complex?
The units there.
They're, yeah, it's actually a mixed-use building with commercial, residential, and retail.
What are you going to say to, I mean, is there any, do we have anything that says you're moving into a building that has no parking, you expect it not to have parking?
No, they do have parking.
I know, but they don't have, they don't have what, we're going a different direction here, right?
Correct.
Correct, Michael?
Yes, they have.
This is a new, and this is something that I know is real important to Mr. Garcetti and his vision, but how do we tell the people, when they move in, that there's no parking, you're not going to discourage?
I can let the applicant speak to the sales strategy they're going to use for that, but what we've seen in downtown further is many times, if people need additional parking, sometimes units are offered if they have maybe two cars, but there's also a lot of people who can pay less for a unit by maybe not even buying a parking space. So by decoupling the parking from the individual units, I'm not exactly sure on this project, I can have the applicant speak to that.
You want to speak to it?
Many times, that's how it's utilized.
Councilman Craig Lawson again for the record.
Yes, and this will be part of your time, Mr. LeBanche.
Is that okay? This project has over 500 parking spaces, over 500 parking spaces. The theory here is one parking space per unit.
500 parking spaces per bed?
I'm sorry, one parking space per bedroom. So if you have a one-bedroom unit, there would be...
I know, this is a new thing. I just want to make sure the city says, like, you know, we have laws now that are different. We're going a different direction, which I can understand, I know it's a strong desire. But what do we tell people? Because this morning, I happened to get up real early, and I drove through neighborhoods because of street lighting problems, and I couldn't believe the number of streetcars parked away from what was a dense area, because cars are an important mobility at this point here. How do we tell people, "Hey, you're going to be in here, but this is a new building, we're going to count on the walking trade," so that you know that? And even, does it prevent anything from having a professional parking district if that so happens in the future?
Just to correct the record, I made a mistake. The 107 parking spaces is code for the commercial areas. The commercial areas are fully parked. In terms of the additional 413 spaces for the residential units meets the parking average that we've seen on projects like this in the past. And again, a lot of it is the additional guest parking that we see, that many people may utilize multiple cars. We're seeing people go away from that. The units become cheaper, because you're not paying the maybe up to $40,000 you would need for a space of parking by having two or three spaces when many single families are moving in there for a one-bedroom apartment, one-bedroom condominium, don't need quite that same...
I got it, I got it, Michael, but you corrected yourself there on the...
Correct.
Okay, and also Sunset is not necessarily the bus, high-propensity buses that Hollywood has. Hollywood has a little better route, but I'm excited about the opportunity to see this developed as such. I just want to make sure people know going in, as we go through this transformation in not just this area but other areas, that they're going to live. How many bicycle racks are there? How many bicycle racks?
On the parking, let me just address...
I'm okay with the parking, so unless you want me to change my...
I was going to say, cue condition number eight actually does notify people about the parking, because you asked...
No, but he's straightened it out for me. How about on the bike racks?
There are over 90 bicycle covered...
Say no more. Okay, thank you very much.
Bicycle stalls.
Got it, that's good. This is very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBanche. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. Madam President, as it's compelled to speak, you know, Councilman LeBanche and the staff here, we've been trying really hard to make sure that a mix arises for people that come in to move into these facilities. They'll come in with their eyes wide open. They'll know there'll be only one parking space for one bedroom. The beauty of this, it's mixed use, to have a whole array of facilities within the structure where they can walk to their needs. And within those blocks, they can walk conveniently in a manner in which a car is not needed. So you're right, we're going a different direction, but it's being done methodically, it's being done with the understanding that the commercial space is the complement to residential, which in the long run, eliminates the need for those parking spaces. So it's a change in culture, a change in the way we look at our space, but more importantly, we're adding conveniences that eliminates the need for the car. So this is one of those facilities that adds that type of dimension that we should hopefully embrace in order to lower our contamination levels, lower our congestions, because of the convenience and the proximity of all these services. So it's a great project, a compliment, Councilman Garcetti and his staff for getting us to this point. It hasn't been easy, but we've done our due diligence, we've gone through our committees and followed the law, and we're here, and I ask for unanimous vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. That's been approved. Next item, Mr. Parks, is item 25. We have three speakers on this item, and then we will go to the report, Mr. Arnold Sacks, Mr. Zuma Dog, and Mr. Matt Daud. We also ask that item number 24 go forth with.
Yes, good afternoon.
Mr. Sacks?
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. What was interesting about this item, and it was carried over from last week, from July 23rd's council session, was hearing the council members who had served in the state legislation prior to becoming council members, how they resolved to balance the state budgets by going into the city coffers and taking money delegated by the state to the city and doing it over, and now they've come down to the city of L.A. to sit in city council. So it needs to be done. You read in the newspapers today that there are agencies for, clinical agencies that are being forced to borrow money so that they can stay in operation, so that they can serve the public, and yet the state budget is out of balance, and nothing has been done in regard to that. We need to take some action on it. We need to approve something. If you have a better idea, or if you said, "Hey, you know what? Why don't you cut some of the benefits for the state workers and the state legislation, or cut down the per diem, or take a 10% salary cut to help balance the budget? Let's take care of those items." We saw what happened with the city, how all this was going to happen, all these cuts were going to be taking place, yet the only thing that happened were fees were raised on the backs of the public. So the state takes the money from the cities, the cities takes the money from the public, and either way, the public ends up paying. It's a farce, but it's transparent and open for duty and humanity. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Ha ha, very funny. They busted before I start, I get it. One minute, please. Okay, this is about the state wants to retain or borrow funds protected by Prop 1A. Okay, this is why people vote no on all new tax and bonds on the ballot in November. Every time, they say it's for one thing, then it goes for something else. You voted for Prop 1C, now the state's going to retain. And by the way, there's a difference between borrow and retain. Retain means not give it back, okay? So, oh, 1A, thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to address councilmembers. So again, I'd like to say, Prop 1A, they say it's for this, now the state's going to retain it. They put up the Prop 1C, there was Prop 1C, sorry for my confusion, I forgot about Prop 1C. They said it was going to be emergency housing and shelter, it went for something else. Trash collection fees for 1,000 new cops, we hired 300, the rest went for something else. So the point is, and I could keep going on, Proposition S, phone, internet, taxes...
You've gone past the one minute, thank you very much, Mr. Zuma Dog. You've gone past the one minute.
Well, excuse me, since I already went into the minute, I'm going to keep talking.
Sure, please, go ahead.
So Proposition S, they said, "Gee, Prop S, or else we're going to have to fire everybody." Now they didn't fire anybody. So again, the message here, the state wants to borrow. I'll tell you when the state could borrow this money, when Arnold Schwarzenegger comes down here and pries it out my hand, I'll twist his girly arm and kick him back to Calisack.
Please do not yell and...
You're not taking this money. So, thank you all drawing in. So I'm here to say, if girly Governor Schwarzenegger wants this money, he could try to claw it out of my hands. I say, everybody say vote no to this. We are not giving the state money that is earmarked for this city. They should be giving us money. We're the ones that have the ports, we're the ones with the smog, we're the ones with the traffic, so we're going to keep this money, and you get us more money, you don't take money from us. And I'd like to say vote no on all taxes, because it never goes for what they say.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Daud.
First of all, I'll be concerned if the Prop 1A money gets into Zuma Dog's hands, and we got to pry it out of his hand. No one will get it. But anyway, I'm actually, I'm in favor of the state. I agree with him, don't vote for any new tax... vote for any new taxes on the ballot, that's the first thing he's right about, but this one's already voted, you're already paying this one off for the next 25 years anyway, it's a bond, and now the state, see now, yesterday was the greatest day in my time of coming to City Hall, I seem to say that every week too, but yesterday really was, Jack Weiss was here first of all, but secondly, the city got up, every city council member one by one got up and said how disgusted and horrified and appalled that some authority could come and take your money. So you've all got Michael Hunt syndrome now, because that's what you all did down at the beach, you came and took his money, but how did you take it? You didn't come down and go, oh, we'll borrow it like they do on the agenda, they ran him into jail.
He is not speaking on the issue, on the agenda.
I'm speaking of the issue of taking, borrowing, and retaining money from people like you.
This is Proposition 1A on the state.
Right, they're taking the money from the City of Los Angeles Transportation Fund, is that not right? But I don't think you should get it, because this is what you guys do with that money, you front-end load management consultants to tell you how to build some super-duper transport system, but by the time they build it, like the Gold Line, you run out of money and you gotta come back for more. So Zoom is right, don't vote for these, because here they are, they're just taking it for something else, but this time, I'm glad, because at least the state can balance the budget with it, possibly get more money from the federal government by not being bankrupt, and that way the city will end up with more money.
Thank you. That ends public comment on this item. Uh, Mr. Parks, on item number 25.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, could we have the city staff to come up, CLA CAO? And colleagues, the reason we held this over from Wednesday is just to see if there's been any progress, uh, with the, uh, the state and other issues, uh, before we go on the weekend and see if there's any issues that we need to be aware of, uh, at this time.
Good afternoon, uh, since last Wednesday, um, not much has happened, other than a couple of things, um, with regard to, um, the conference committee report, the Senate is scheduled to vote on that next Tuesday, so the Senate members have been recalled to the Capitol to vote on that item next Tuesday, so we would have more information for you, perhaps Tuesday or Wednesday.
When are they gonna vote on Tuesday?
They're actually going to be voting on Assembly Bill 1781 with regard to the budget bill. Uh, in addition to that, uh, the governor yesterday issued a draft executive order which, uh, enumerated a number of budget-cutting actions in the event, uh, the budget bill is not passed, uh, soon, this is primarily because of cash flow concerns, um, so in, in the meantime, we will continue to monitor and update, uh, just for your information as well, uh, our office, as well as the mayor's office staff have been contacting members of the local delegation, uh, to get a sense of where this is headed, and, um, unfortunately cannot report to you, uh, where they are headed with this, we've got a very similar message, which was, uh, almost non-committal at this time.
Let me ask, what could we expect on Tuesday? What, what will they be voting on, and what view that we'll have as far as the state picture or impact on our finances?
Uh, right now, in Assembly Bill 1781, um, there is no shifting of, of local dollars, um, it's primarily the tax increases that, um, have been proposed, so at this time, um, there is no local shift, however, uh, depending upon what happens, uh, in the next intervening week, uh, there could be very well efforts to, um, make those shifts of local dollars, so at this time, there is no, no shift, but, uh, we are still waiting and monitoring and, um, asking our, um, people to continue to contact, uh, local delegations and members to, uh, support, uh, our position of not shifting any more local tax dollars.
Okay, or you have anything additional?
Not really, I think Sharon pretty much summed everything up, but certainly we're monitoring, uh, every, um, uh, aspect and, and sort of what's been put on the table, so we're trying to stay on top of things, and certainly we'll get back to it since more information is available.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Parks, and also just so that you know, the CAO and our office, uh, we, we're not gonna be sitting around waiting to see what happens with regard to the state, uh, we may need to take pretty immediate action with regard to our budget, so, uh, both this, uh, CAO and CLA's office will be developing, um, some possible scenarios for the council to consider, so that we are not, um, um, pushed too closely when, when something happens, we wanna be able to act as quickly as possible.
So the earliest that we may know something would be, uh, next council meeting on Wednesday?
Yeah, we would, we would recommend that you continue this item on the next council meeting, as well as the intervening council meetings for the next, uh, couple of weeks, and so that we may report to you, um, with the most up-to-date information.
So we'll continue this ongoing, so next, next Wednesday, you said, or next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
You wanna do, now they're voting Tuesday, would we have information Tuesday, or...
We don't know what time they will be voting, so...
Worst-case scenario, we'll continue it until Wednesday after that, but let's have it back for Tuesday.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, this item will be continued until Tuesday. Uh, colleagues, on item number 26, uh, Mr. Arnold Sachs has reached his limit as far as public comment, so item 26 is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been approved, thank you.
Next is item 12, and there is a card on this.
Yes, Armando, Herman Armando? See ya, Herman.
He always started with my tongue before I get to your ear. Which is totally unfair, inappropriate, but today's item 12 is what we're talking about, and because you caught me off-guard, it's obvious that today's problems should not work around the taxpayers, today's problems should work on these items, such items that usually declare that CRA...
He is not speaking on a rent...
Pardon?
He is not speaking on item number 12.
This, this item is regarding a, a REAP account?
A whom?
This is regarding the resolution removing property at 1812 South Union Avenue from the rent escrow account program. You put a card in on item number 12.
Am I there now?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about the property at 1812 South Union Avenue, is that correct? Well, what really is the problem there? Because I don't know, many people today do not know what's going on in these properties. As we know, that housing is falling apart, the crisis of, um, people in foreclosures, people losing their jobs to afford to pay their mortgages, to stabilize, stabilize themselves in rent, and now we have this ordinance where we're gonna push people out of our community? Got your attention now, huh, Mr. Alacon? I simply do that because...
Please, sir, just address the council as a, as a whole.
Oh, I'm sorry, but going back to this, you know, it's time to get people's attention to hear what is spoken here at City Hall. Today, many, many things are not spoken and heard, so sometimes it's good that a constituent walks in and kind of derails the conversation to get attention, attention that needs to be addressed, attention that needs to be heard, so as of today, I, I would like to see that changed.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, um, we have one other speaker, this public speaker card, Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd, don't see him in the room, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you, next item?
Next is item number 14, and there is a card on this item.
Yes, uh, Mr. Matt Dowd, not present, Mr. Zuma Dogg? No, you wish not to speak, okay, Armando Herman? Armando, this is on item number 14.
Now going back to special event fees, last week when I was here, I had mentioned that many times these funds and, um, ideas of where this funds goes is put on one table and then rerouted to another, just as we heard Zuma Dogg and a few other constituents speak about how, um, the abuse of, um, funding is inappropriately used, and not placed in its appropriate funding designated area. So it's just a shame that today, in this crisis of economy, that we have to go through all this, that we have to point out to city council that here we are spending $1,484, here we're spending $1,250, why can't the marketers who are participating in our committees spend their money on us? Remember, we're, we're advertising to bring in people from other countries to absorb and, and lavish themselves on what the great idea, the change of LA is all about. So why do the taxpayers have to pick up these coffers? Why do we have to be depressed and suppressed when we're pulling money out of our pockets to fund these ideas, to build a rail to the ocean, to build, uh, massive transportation? The problems are still here, we still have the problem of transportation, we still have the problem of commuting, so let's get someone other than the taxpayers to pick up the tab, maybe let's get some special interests or lobbyists to cover these additional charges and not the taxpayers, because today, as we heard, we are going through a economic crunch, and yet we keep spending taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg, did you change your mind?
Yeah.
Okay, this is your last minute today.
Yes, if I speak on this, we don't have to wait for these other ones, you could release them, so I'll just speak on this instead. Special event fees, okay, now, the city is coming to voters and putting on a lot of fees, a lot of new taxes, trash, they're gonna put baggies, you know, the little baggage, plastic baggies at the grocery store, 25 cents, you know, property tax, you own property, hey, we wanna fix crime, a tax for that, you want your trash removed, we're gonna put a tax on that, then we're gonna triple the tax, uh, if you got a bulky item to remove, we gotta tax you for that, then all the money that they get to provide services to these communities end up getting just thrown in down the, it's like they're getting paid commission on dollars wasted. The City of Los Angeles, through these special event fees, I say City Hall is the world's largest paper shredder, of which federal, state, and local money is shredded and wasted, the communities fall into further disrepair, and then you don't know what to do about it. Stop wasting this money.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg. Um, colleagues, we do have now before us items 14 and 20 and 27, uh, which Mr. Zuma Dogg had put his card in for, 14 first, okay, we'll do 14 first, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 14, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you, now we will take items, uh, 20 and 27. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 20 and 27, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Can we move, um, item 26 forthwith, please?
Yes, we'll move, uh, 26 forth, uh, with. Um, Mr., um, Mr. Herman, uh, are you leaving, you have one card left, or you choose not to? You, okay, so item before us now is item number 22, you wanna speak on item 22?
Um, pull out of this one.
Okay.
I'm exhausted.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, you chose not to speak, so, thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 22, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next is item number 17, and that was called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Mr. Alacon, item number 17? Mr. Alacon?
There is also a substitute motion that's been distributed.
Yeah, this, this is a, a technical change, um, just to recognize that, uh, we have an additional council member who wants to participate in the program, and that's, uh, Councilmember Jack Weiss, um, to celebrate the Grito, uh, El Grito celebration in September, uh, and that means that, uh, eight of the council members are, uh, helping to fund this, uh, enormous program, uh, so with that, uh, I, I ask that we approve the substitute for item 17.
Thank you very much, that item is now before us with, yes?
If that could go forthwith, if it is approved.
If it's approved, okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no other questions on that item, that item is before us with the amending motion, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you, that item has been approved, and it, yes, will go forthwith, Mr. Alacon. Next items?
Madam President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Madam President, there are excuses on the desk.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on October 7th for personal business, this meets policy.
Thank you, uh, she will be excused.
Councilmember Han requests to leave at 12:15 PM on September 10th for city business, this meets policy.
Thank you, she'll be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Uh, we have announcements today, I know, colleagues, um, I'd like to, uh, make an announcement, uh, today, uh, I held a press conference this morning, uh, with two, uh, women whose mothers, whose sons were killed, um, uh, by gang violence, neither of them were in a gang last December, um, and were killed, we had offered a $25,000 reward, this happened in the Van Nuys area near, uh, Hazelteen, between Vannow and Sherman Way, we would ask that anyone, uh, who knows about this particular incident, the killing of Kevin DeVille and Saul Garcia, we'd ask that they call the Los Angeles Police Department and talk to the detectives at 818-374-0040, we could use the public's help in solving this vicious and terrible crime, uh, in our, my district and in the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and members, uh, I, I mentioned this on Wednesday, but I'd like to mention it again, uh, Councilmember Parks and I are sponsoring free, uh, movies in the parks, uh, the, the program begins tomorrow at 7:15 at Ray Near Park, which is located at 2803 Ray Near Avenue, uh, the whole, the entire community is invited, we're having free, uh, hot dogs, free popcorn, free, uh, uh, prizes, we're giving away bicycles, uh, gas cars, backpacks loaded with back-to-school items, um, like I said, uh, the, the movie tomorrow is The Never-Ending Story, uh, and prior to the movie, we will show a cartoon, so everyone, uh, in the, the area is invited, we're gonna have four of these, you can come to one or come to them all, and I just wanna take a moment to thank some of the sponsors, the, uh, Los Angeles Police Department is partnering with us on this, the Department of Rec. and Parks, LA, uh, DWP, and a host of the neighborhood councils and homeowner associations, just too many to mention, I'm very grateful to all of them, we're excited about tomorrow, this was an idea that, uh, we got from Councilmember Greg Smith and Mitch Englander, uh, from his staff, so we're, again, we are excited, and, uh, I believe, Mr. Parks, the, the following week, we're together doing movies at the park, at, uh, Rancho Park, where our districts, uh, kinda join, so anyway, everyone is invited, thank you, uh, Madam President.
Mr. Reyes.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues and the City of Los Angeles, you're all welcome to hop on the Dodger Trolley, begins today, it's a free service provided by the City of LA, 90 minutes before game time, and one after the game ends, it runs approximately every 10 minutes, starts at Union Station, goes up Sunset Boulevard, and up into Illusion Park Avenue to Dodger Stadium, so it's a great way to experience a Dodger game, it's a great way to know our different neighborhoods, Chinatown, Echo Park, uh, it connects to Metro Lines 2 and 4 and Marion Way, and Marion Way and Sunset, on Figueroa and Sunset connects to 2455 and 60, 302, 304, 335, Metro Rapid 704, and the dash that goes to Lincoln Heights and Chinatown, and at Union Station, so come on all, enjoy the Dodger game, enjoy the street ride, hop on the trolley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for your, uh, leadership on this issue, I'm gonna join, I think, tonight to, uh, embark upon that wonderful trolley, so look forward to it. Any other announcements, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Dion?
Just to make a, a record, uh, as Mr. Zuma Dogg was leaving the chambers, he let out a loud yell that literally disrupted the council meeting, and he should be warned at the beginning of the next meeting that he attends.
Thank you, uh, Dion, our city attorney. I know we have adjourning motions, if I could please ask everyone to rise? I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Chair, I would like to adjourn in memory of Reuben Lovret. Mr. Lovret passed away on May 3rd, 2008, at the age of 90. He was born in 1917 in... He was born in 1917 in Guadalajara, Mexico. Mr. Lovret was a remarkable man, whose tremendous loyalty, passion, and vision helped shape, shaped the Little Tokyo community and changed the lives of countless individuals. He attended both the University of Southern California and UCLA, and had an extensive background in the field of architecture. In 1950, he began to serve the City of Los Angeles as a city planner, a position he would hold for 32 years, until he retired in 1982. During his time as a city planner, Mr. Lovret helped many Japanese-Americans rebuild in Little Tokyo after they returned home after World War II. He was in charge of the central city planning group, which covered the Little Tokyo area, and from there, he always went out of his way to lend a helping hand, he was a true friend of the community. Even after his retirement, he remained very active in human relations and enjoyed bringing people from various ethnic and cultural backgrounds together. He is survived by his wife Dorothy, daughter Christine, and son David. He will be missed by all who knew him and remain in the hearts and minds of many.
Thank you.
And I'd ask that all members sign the certificate of tribute, and I've just got a little something to give to the family today.
Thank you, and I was gonna say, I know the family is here, for you to present that. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Are there any other adjourning motions today, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned, thank you.